Guys, all ready?
Ready.
All right. Call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. We're here for Freeport Town Council Meeting Number 07-22 at 6:00 PM, 6:03. Start with a roll call. Starting at the end, we have Counselor Pillsbury.
President.
Counselor Lawrence.
President.
Counselor Daniele.
Here.
Counselor Egan.
Here.
Chair Pilch is here. Counselor Fornier is excused. And Counselor Bradley may be joining us shortly. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Okay. Our next order of business is to waive the reading of the minutes of meeting number 06-22 held on March 15th, 2022, and to accept the minutes as printed.
So moved.
Counselor Lawrence.
Second.
Counselor Daniele, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aight.
That's unanimous. The minutes are approved. Moving right along, our third order of business is some announcements. Three announcements. First is one I'm very excited about. There'll be a draft Downtown Vision Plan Open House this Saturday, April 9th, right here at Town Hall, from 11 to 2 o'clock. You can register at FreeportDowntown.me. We'll have a food truck, we'll have a little presentation, a lot of sketches, drawings, maybe a few games. But it should be an informative day. And I think there's a good amount of people registered, so excited about that. That's our last big public meeting for the Downtown Vision process, for this part of it. Second announcement, the town's Public Works Department has posted roads since February 28th. The Posted Road Guide is available on the Public Works page of the town website. And lastly, in-person programming has returned to the library. Please check our events calendar on the library website or sign up for their monthly newsletter for more information. Next, we have Information Exchange, which is perfect timing. With your permission, unless anyone objects, what I would like to do is we had a item under Other Business to talk about the housing bill. But I'd like to move that up to Information Exchange because we have, as a distinguished guest tonight, we have the Speaker of the House who's sponsored the bill and has offered to come talk to us about it. So unless anyone objects, I thought we'd move that up to Information Exchange.
Splendid idea.
Splendid idea. So, not to rush you right into the hot seat, but Melanie, do you want to come up and give a little introduction and then we can dive right in as soon as Speaker catches his breath?
I will, yes. Hi, everybody. My name is Melanie Sax. I'm so honored and delighted to be your state representative here for House District 48, which is Freeport and a little bit of Pownell. And one of the things that I really loved is this close conversation between the stuff I'm working on in Augusta and the folks in Freeport and Pownell, both with the Select Board of Pownell and with the council here in Freeport. Issues that are important to you, you let me know about. I've come before you a few times to give you a summary of bills or emailed back and forth around bills that are really important. Freeport has done such amazing work in the last few years around the downtown visioning, planning, rezoning conversations. And this bill that's coming before you, I've had a few inquiries about. It's called LD 2003, and it is sponsored by our very own Speaker, Ryan Fecto. When I talked with him about it and said, "Hey, can you give me some information to give us the latest updates?" Because it'd be really interesting to know how the work we're doing here in Freeport either aligns or perhaps diverges a bit from the vision within the bill. So asking him about that, he said, "Hey, I'd love to come to Freeport," and I will never say no to an expert. And appreciate all the work that you all have done to review the bill thus far, and so appreciate Speaker Ryan Fecto being here to answer our questions. So it truly is an information exchange. He's willing to come, talk about the bill, talk about some of the questions that you've already forwarded to me, that I've given to him about the bill. And again, just have a really good conversation. If folks out there are watching this and have questions later on, always, as you know, I think everybody in town has my email, melanie.sax@legislature main.gov, or my cellphone number, 207-299-6825. Yes, I can say that on TV because literally I've had this same number for 15 years when I was on the council and now. So love to hear from you about this bill or any other issue as well. So if you have questions after tonight's meeting, please let me know, and we'll do the best we can to get the information to you. So that being said, I'm going to sit down and let you speak with our Speaker, Ryan Fecto.
Thank you, Representative Sax. Welcome, Speaker.
Is it possible for me to?
You need, yeah.
Yeah.
They can plug in, right? If we have the right adapter.
Just give me about five seconds here.
Are we going to do the wireless thing?
And a Wi-Fi password, by chance?
It's right there on the wall.
Okay, thank you. We'll share that with the viewing audience.
Freeport 2019 exclamation point. You can tell we've been in pause since. USB port, then that'd be an issue.
I don't. Did not bring my extender.
Can you do HDMI or I can do USB?
Okay. Then we're out of luck.
Do you want to email it to me and I can put?
Yes, yes.
We've got, he's going to email it to me and then?
Right on, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to have to save this first. It's in Google Doc, so. This is bad prep on my part here.
Let's try this.
Failed to open.
Do you have my email address? I'm assuming, okay.
Huh. Does not like me using the internet, apparently. At all. Well.
Hi, Dan.
Yeah, I don't know. I connected to the...
Peter, what's the Wi-Fi?
I did connect to it, but it didn't work.
We're having trouble connecting.
Oh, which Wi-Fi? Freeport Public.
Is that working?
Let's see. It's thinking. Thinking, thinking. Well.
Let me turn your microphone on, Ed.
The other option is, oh, my cellphone. That's the other option.
There we go. We have it on multiple devices, I'm sure.
Yes. Jenna. Presentation.
He does cross-country?
Yeah.
It's there. It's not a... I'm on the public here.
Send a copy.
In that menu. Internet or secure network is not working.
Yeah, I can't access the internet, but that's...
Even here?
Yeah.
Are you on Freeport underscore public?
Yeah.
Is that working? Do you have any Mac experience with that crap?
No, honestly, I just use my cellphone half the time when that doesn't work, so happy.
See, these are things we didn't deal with when we were on Zoom, right? Like, this is a...
He zoomed in.
You can zoom in, but you don't have a connection.
Right, he doesn't have any connection at all.
Do you have the phone in a formers?
No, he's trying to even do it on the...
It's a Google presentation, so it's not like a PDF that I can...
Do you want to see it?
Do you have USB-C?
Yeah.
Run this cable over to him here.
Okay. Hold on. Okay. Well... Be right back. We're getting there. This is good.
Technology happens.
I know. Why does it happen? Technology. It's good.
USB-C, DHT. Here we go.
USB-C, DHT. Dan's a... Think this will work?
C, is it USB-C?
Yeah, it is, yeah. Okay. Life.
Do you have an internet connection?
I do.
Let's just make sure it doesn't, like, pull too hard on anything. Get your actual... Maybe, close.
Oh, yeah. There we go. There we go. Cool.
Yeah, you're welcome. These are easy results. I don't like this. So for those of you who just joined, we've got a distinguished guest. We've got the Speaker of the House, Ryan Fecto, here to talk to us about LD 2003, which is a housing ability sponsored, and we've sorted out some technical difficulties and think we're ready to go.
Awesome. Well, thank you to the members of the council for your gracious invitation, allowing me to speak before you. It is humbling to be in the community that was represented by the former Speaker of the House, who I had the pleasure of serving with for two terms, and I'm really grateful for your time this evening to talk about LD 2003. I'm going to quickly just go over how we got to where we are, and then I think for the council's sake, dive into the nitty-gritty details, which I'm sure you all appreciate far more than perhaps the top-line points. And obviously, this presentation was completely necessary to have accompanying me because it is more appealing an appearance than I think just having me at the podium, so. Just as, just for, as way of background, things that you all know, but worth repeating time and time again, because the challenges that we face here in Maine are not getting any better, and they're due to get worse if we continue to operate under the status quo. First and foremost, Maine needs to build 1,000 affordable units each year to meet the current demand that we face here in the state. From 2014 to 2020, we built roughly 25% of that need. So we were building, on average, 250 units of housing, of affordable housing, and we needed 1,000 units to maintain pace with demand. Fortunately, in 2021, that number was around 500, and I'll talk to some, about some policies that perhaps explain why we finally had that relatively significant jump in the number of units built. But still, even at 500, we're still halfway towards that production goal of 1,000 units each year. And we know why we need more housing. Our workforce is dependent upon people being able to find a place to live, a place to live affordably and comfortably. Young people are looking to come back to Maine or stay in Maine, and they are too looking for housing opportunities that meet where they are in their life. And older Mainers are looking to downsize or looking for something that's more affordable than their current mortgage or whatever their situation may be. And I've heard from a lot of older folks across the state who've said, "I want to downsize, but I'm so afraid that if I put my house on the market, it will sell in two days, and I don't know where I will go." And we're hearing that from realtors across the state. And our housing crisis requires action. It requires a whole series of actions that the state and local towns can take to address the challenges we face. It's not just what's prescribed in LD 2003. But what we're trying to do with LD 2003 is certainly part of the solution. One aspect is funding, and we've put more funding towards housing over the last several years at the state level. But some of these things can be resolved by just changing the rules of the game. What's possible? We need all types of housing. We need affordable housing, which should be the expectation in every community, to have housing that is affordable, that meets the needs of working Mainers. It needs to be the norm rather than the anomaly. But we need housing that meets all levels. So when we talk about housing production, I'm not just focused on low-income housing and affordable housing that meets the middle. We need housing production of all kinds. And this bill addresses housing in totality, not just specifically housing that's subsidized. And we need creative partnerships, creative partnerships and solutions to fix the housing crunch. Maine can be a leader, and we think that LD 2003 can lead the way across the nation. So just to reiterate some of the points that I've already made, oldest housing stock in the nation, we know that. We're pretty familiar with that often cited statistic. Where one in five Maine renters currently are paying more than half of their income towards housing costs. So if you think about one in five Mainers, a state of about 1.3 million people, that's hundreds of thousands of Mainers who are putting half of their income towards their rent every month. Unsustainable. And of course, we know Maine's number-one emission is from transportation. So this is just reiterating the production that we've had on an annual basis. Again, that 1,000-unit goal, you can see the numbers. You know, 2018, 125 units. That is just not going to cut it. Again, 449 in 2021. Some good work, and that's in part the good work that resulted from some of the work we did in Augusta. In 2020, the governor signed my bill into law, making the single largest investment in affordable housing in the state's history. $10 million over eight years, $80 million in total towards housing. It's resulted in some projects that have recently broken ground, including a project in Skowhegan. The former women's reformatory is being turned into 30 units of housing in downtown Skowhegan. Possible because of that bill. We also allocated $50 million in American Rescue Plan funds for the construction of new housing. The governor recently refinanced a housing bond, which actually adds $38 million in new housing. And of course, we released the recommendations of our commission's work related that has resulted in LD 2003. So here are the commission recommendations as they were made from the commission to the legislature. The first one allows ADUs, accessory dwelling units by right in all zoning districts currently zoned for single-family homes. Recommendation number two eliminates single-family zoning restrictions in all residential zones across the state. So another, and I'll talk in greater detail about how we spell these things out, because these recommendations were sort of very top-level. The bill spells them out in greater detail. Recommendation number three prohibits municipalities from imposing growth caps on the production of new housing. Recommendation number four provides technical and financial assistance to communities who would like to make zoning changes or just explore how they can produce more housing in their community. Recommendation number five creates a density bonus in all residential zones throughout the state. Recommendation number six creates a three-year statewide incentive program for municipalities that want to take up this conversation, maybe create a housing task force and have some real support for that work, and be incentivized to do so, and use that money however the municipality sees fit, even if it's not directly involved with the task force. Recommendations number seven creates a system of priority development areas where multifamily housing is permitted with limited regulatory barriers. Recommendation number eight strengthens Main's Fair Housing Act by eliminating the terms "character," "overcrowding of land," and "undue concentration of population" as legal basacies for zoning regulations. And recommendation number nine creates a state-level housing appeals board to review denials of affordable housing projects made at the local level. Nearly all of these recommendations were unanimous, except for a few that had one or two members of the commission in opposition. So we put the bill forward with all nine recommendations, because this was my bill. I felt it was important that if I'm going to put a bill forward that implements the recommendations, I'm going to put forward a bill that puts forward all nine recommendations. But I also have been in the legislature now for eight years. I know how bills work. I know how the process works, and things change. And here's how they changed. So the first recommendation with ADUs, we took a number of suggestions from municipal officials across the state, including Maine Municipal Association, and we have changed the ADU section in a rather significant way. First, we made sure that there was language around water and wastewater systems. We want to make sure that if you're adding an ADU onto your lot, that there's adequate drinking water system or sewage system. We also added language around shoreline zoning, making sure that any ADU that were to be added to a lot is compliant with shoreline zoning restrictions, whether that be a municipal ordinance that's more restrictive than the state. The state-level restrictions has to be compliant with both. We also added language in the ADU section that says, initially, the bill said that the dimension and setback requirements cannot be more restrictive than the primary structure. Well, we know ADUs are also going to be built in accessory structures like a garage that's detached from the primary structure. So we say, and we've changed the bill to say, the restrictions that are imposed on an accessory structure cannot be more restrictive for an ADU, but you're taking that accessory structure's limitations rather than the primary dwelling. Can get into more detail if you'd like, but that's just generally some top-level information. Under section, recommendation number two, we eliminate single-family zoning restrictions in all residential zones. Well, we've changed this also rather significantly. In fact, on Thursday, the committee will be revoting on the bill. The change in this section says that a lot where the density does not allow for more than one unit, you have to allow up to two dwelling units, so a duplex. And then, in a, on a lot that also has the same density restriction of one unit, you have to allow up to three, either three, up to four units. So you could, if it's located in a growth area or it has access to public water and sewage. So I have a, I should have a slide on this, let me see. So just to illustrate, empty lot, you can have a single-family home or you can have a duplex. If it's an empty lot, you can have a triplex or fourplex, up to, if it's located in the growth area or it's located with an existing connection to water, public water and public sewage. This is only for lots that are empty. When you have an existing home on the lot, you can add one unit within the dwelling. So you could convert an attic into an apartment or a basement into an apartment. Or you can have, you can have a unit added, so again, the accessory dwelling unit. Or you can have a unit added that's detached, again, the detached accessory dwelling unit. The bill spells that, spells out that the attached and the detached have to meet the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, which will have a minimum size requirement and a maximum size requirement that will be set by towns. The bill does not spell out what the maximum square footage of the ADU is. The bill leaves it to communities to make that determination. I know most communities, a lot of communities already have a maximum square footage. So the yellow, where you see yellow, it's representing the ADU. Where you see the, just the red, it's just representing the conversion of an existing space within the house. Again, if there's an existing home, you could also have an attic converted into an apartment and the additional structure of an ADU, attached or detached with an attic. But you can't have, you couldn't have two, you can have an attic split in half and turned into two units within the existing dwelling. You couldn't have two ADUs get attached to the building. You couldn't have two ADUs built in the backyard. Those are the restrictions. And this, this was obviously a very significant change from the original way the bill spelled it out, which was, you can just have four units, period, on a lot that was previously restricted just to single-family homes. We took particularly this slide, we took the recommendation of the Maine Planners Association into account when we adopted this. Recommendation number three, which was the prohibition on municipal growth caps, we strike that from the bill. The only place where it applies is if you're giving a permit to an ADU. That can't count towards your, towards your growth cap, so ADUs don't get counted towards growth caps, but otherwise, the prohibition on growth caps no longer applies. We combined recommendation four and six. The governor had included that language, or variation of that language, in her budget and funded it at $3 million on an ongoing basis. So it's into the baseline of the budget. And so I take the language the governor used and put that into the bill. So technical assistance and incentives from the state will be provided on an ongoing basis, $3 million each year to municipalities. You'll have to apply for the grant to be, to participate in the program. Recommendation number five, the density bonuses. We clarify that the density bonus is a bonus of, based on the base density, not, so if you already have a density bonus, you're not multiplying on top of the existing density bonus. And it only applies in areas where multifamily housing was already allowed and in growth areas and, or where public water and public sewer exists. So the density bonus only applies in areas where that's designated as a growth area or there's public sewer, public water. It's important to note that the density bonus requires the developer to agree that more than 50% of the units are designated as affordable based on median, 120% of median income of the area, based on HUD rules, and that they agree to enter into a restrictive covenant of 30 years that those, at least 30 years. So those units would be designated as affordable for a period of at least 30 years, which is huge, because you're providing predictability and you're not, you're not getting yourself into a situation where someone develops an affordable project and then 10, five years later, they've hiked the rents up above the original restriction. Recommendation seven, which was designating, every community being required to designate a priority development area, struck from the bill. Recommendation number eight, which was the language around character, overcrowding of land, struck from the bill. And recommendation nine, which created the state-level appeals board, also gets struck from the bill. All things, you know, accessory dwelling units, we want to make sure that, you know, these are allowed, that folks can welcome family members. I visited an ADU in Wells that would have otherwise not been allowed in the zone, except for they were, they, in their situation, it was okay, they were okay with ditching a refrigerator and stove. But if they had included a refrigerator and stove in the kitchen, the ADU would not have been allowed in the zone in which they built it. And the person that's living there is the owner of the house, it's her mother, early stage, early stages of dementia, and it was half the cost to that family than alternatives, placing her in assisted living, buying her a condominium. Half the cost to those other options was compared to adding the accessory dwelling unit onto their house. If you drove down that street, you would never know that they added an ADU to the back of their house for their mom. You would never know it. We want to make sure that if they did want a refrigerator and stove, that they would be able to have that. And that's what that, that's what the ADU section will address. You know, promoting density, promoting equity, technical support for municipalities, all of those things that we think are really important. Obviously, I already talked about this, and I already talked about this. I think at this point, I'm happy to take questions. Yes, yes.
What questions have other communities had? I mean, it's really hard to absorb all this in one presentation if you haven't read the bill, and we just got it what day ago. I know some of us know it by heart. Other communities have thought this is a great idea, some haven't. What have the ones that haven't said negative about the bill?
Well, there's been plenty of negativity. I think that's what happens when you propose something that's...
Whatever. What is the negative?
Going to lead to change. Well, I think, I think that there's been different levels of constructive feedback from beginning to where we are today. Throughout the process, I have been at the table with Maine Municipal Association, which is obviously representing the voice of municipalities. There have been numerous changes, like, I mean, I could, I could pull up the 60 files that I have on my computer that have reflected the various changes that the bill's gone through since the beginning, most of them technical in nature. The generally, generally, the bigger, the bigger thrusts of the bill that have remained intact, it's been the technical pieces of actual implementation and how this would apply. You know, one of the, one of the major points of criticism is one-size-fits-all, local control. We, you know, we know those. local control, we, you know, we know those arguments fairly well, I've heard them before. And I, I think there's, there were some, there's some validity, validity to some of those arguments, especially when it comes to local control. Yes, is this ma, is this putting a state policy in place that is different than perhaps what a municipality currently allows? Yes, inherently, that's the whole, that's the whole point. The, the point is, we have a housing crisis that's not going to solve itself, and we have to make sure that more, more housing gets built. And allowing more housing on a lot, on lots that were previously restricted, or still are currently restricted, simply to single-family homes, it's not going to help us dig our way out of this problem. And so, the bill takes an overall, overarching principle and applies it to your community, but it still respects your community's ability to say, our dimension requirements are this, our, our setback requirements, you know, the, the duplex, if it's on a single-family lot, has to respect Freeport's dimension requirements, Freeport's setback requirements, Freeport's minimum size lot, and, and any other requirements that you have in place that, that are not contemplated by the bill, right? So, you know, I push back on the, on the, on the one-size-fits-all argument, because it's not one-size-fits-all. If it were, then the bill would spell out density requ, the, the setback requirements, the dimension requirements, the minimum lot size requirements. That's not what this bill does. It takes an overarching principle and says, this is what has to be allowed, but it has to be allowed within the restrictions that your community has in place. And, and I think we've reached the point, I, at least I feel like, I've reached the point where I have, I have satisfied most of the constructive feedback, and now I'm, now I feel like I'm in the place where most of the arguments in opposition to the bill are leaning on the straw man arguments, which are local control and one-size-fits-all. I'm happy to engage when it comes to working on constructive things that actually make this bill stronger and better and more responsive to communities. You know, I, there's not much I can do in response to one-size-fits-all, because that's not very informative instruction for, for what this bill does. Now, if the goal is to kill the bill, then maybe a one-size-fits-all argument is the argument to lean on, that's fine. I don't expect everyone to be happy with this bill or supportive. That's democracy, and we'll live to fight another day if the bill, if the bill doesn't make it between both chambers, but I think it will. And I think it's important that communities have engaged in a respectful and constructive way on this bill, because it's made the bill better. On Thursday, when I go back before the committee and they take on the additional changes that I'll be putting forward as a result of dozens and dozens and dozens of conversations from municipal leaders across the state, this bill will be better because of that constructive feedback. It won't be better because someone just screamed into the, into the, into the abyss, local control and one-size-fits-all. That, that has not been constructive instruction for me.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, thanks for coming in.
Yes.
I want to applaud your courage for moving this forward, knowing that touching the third rail of home rule and municipal zoning has a lot of current. And so, well done to get this out and get it, get it circulated. I'm in affordable housing finance during my day job, and, and so I've seen a lot of the back and forth on this. Can you just highlight for, for us how important the, the planning money is for the suggested changes in, in what the bill is proposing? And I, I just want to highlight from my perspective that you can see the word "allowed" in almost every one of these slides presented tonight, and so this is not a mandate that a town has to, it's that a mandate can't, I'm sorry, it's that the bill is to allow for, if an owner wants to add, the town can prohibit it in, in that single-family zoning. So, it's not requiring it, it's making it permissible, and I think those are two dramatically different things. But can you explain a little bit about the, the planning money that comes along with this to help municipalities figure it out?
Yeah, so like I said, the, the, the bill had originally, the commission had originally recommended plant, technical assistance and an incentive program, because we, we met for roughly four or five months last year as a commission, and we had extensive conversations about a lot of items that relate to potential barriers to housing and housing being built, regardless of the money aspect of things. And we quickly realized that, you know, we weren't going to be able to tackle every, every challenge that, that exists. So, for example, parking came up a lot. Some towns have very restrictive parking requirements. That basically makes, makes it so that multifamily housing is unlikely to be built. Would it have been prudent for us to make a statewide policy related to housing? Probably not. I don't think we would have struck the right chord on, on that, on that item, but I do think it's a worthwhile conversation for communities to look at and say, does, do our parking requirements make sense in 2022 as it relates to making sure housing can be built that is not just a single-family home, but maybe a duplex, maybe a triplex? And so, that's where the incentive piece came in, to incentivize the continuation of this conversation that involves items that statewide policy, to, to the point of local control and one-size-fits-all, that, that a statewide policy is just not going to be able to contemplate appropriately, because it is a, it is really a decision that needs to be made by municipality and municipality. So, that's the incentive piece. The governor put forward that in her budget, it's, it's there, it's probably, it will likely get funded, so we'll have that incentive piece to, for communities to take up this conversation and continue the work that we were unable to complete at the commission, either because we didn't have time, or it just was not worth, it wasn't, it wasn't something that the state should be making a statewide policy in relation to. Another, another piece of that is short-term rentals. I don't know, you all have taken up that conversation here.
Oh.
Yes. You know, that's a, that's another big, another hot item, and perhaps the incentive piece can help with, with, with that conversation as well.
I don't know if you heard that in Bath, they're permitting ADU, ADU units to be added to, in single-family zones, much as this bill
Yes.
With the proviso that any occupant has to be in there longer than 90 days.
Yeah, so we, we originally had language in the bill that, that did have a restriction, but in my negotiations with Maine Municipal Association, they informed me that that would, first of all, be unenforceable, and secondly, could, it could have resulted in a fiscal, a fiscal note requiring the state to provide funding to enforce that, that provision. And so, I, I ditched that provision in the bill, but I do think it's something that needs to be considered. I mean, I'm, I'm obviously concerned. We don't want to create housing supply that then just gets used for someone to come visit Maine for a few days, you know, over the summer. That is not, that's not productive, but I, I, unfortunately, we couldn't take on that challenge. I hope more communities will. I, there's hopefully some way of striking a balance between those who want short-term rentals and those who, who don't. I think there's maybe, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't envy the work that you all have to do in relation. I, I get the impression that conversation's been had here before, and
Yeah, several times.
I'm sure, I'm sure it's been fun. And then the technical assistance piece is, you know, making sure that communities have the resources to, first of all, implement what's being proposed in this bill, which doesn't take effect until July 1st of next year. So, there's, there's a large space between bill passage and then implementation. But also, again, to take on, to be, to be able to get support from, from outside experts, if you, if you choose to contract with someone, so, you know, folks that might be able to come in and help, take a, take a fresh look at the, the rules that exist in, in communities to see where, where there might be worthwhile change. Where, where can you improve the, the regulations that, that are imposed upon housing construction?
Just going off of the ADU conversation and your bill not having the restrictiveness of the 90-day that Bath does, can we as a municipality put a restriction on that based on this bill? Or is that against the language, because then we are not allowing somebody to put an ADU on their property?
No, you, you could, you could include, you could include a short-term rental provision. Yeah.
Counselor Billups?
Just a process question. So, the, it'd be a year from now if this passes, how do you see the rollout of technical assistance going? Because, you know, we're going
That's immediate, that's immediate.
And do you know the mechanism for that? I mean, how, how would we apply, who's gonna, who's gonna review applications? Because we're in the middle of a visioning process, and I think we could use all the technical assistance we can get, and that would be really timely for us, and, you know, I'm just wondering how that is going to play out.
Yeah, assuming the budget passes with two-thirds support, which would take effect immediately, so hopefully by adjournment, April 20th. The Department of Economic and Community Development is charged with administering the funds, and so they would, they would create the program, create the rules for it, and then, you know, I could see the funds being dispersed as early as the fall, you know, late summer.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. And they will be also, there's also a position count added, so I think another achievement of this bill is having someone permanently at the Department of Economic and Community Development who can be a resource in this area, someone that's an expert on land use policy, housing construction, that can be, you know, a mainstay in state government, someone that you, you know, town could call up and just get some, some advice, which, you know, sort of was eroded when the State Planning Office ceased to be in existence. And that was another conversation the commission had, whether or not the State Planning Office should be recreated, and I think there were some, there were some good and bad of the State Planning Office, and I think, I don't think we'd want to recreate it in its previous iteration, but this is a step towards providing that, that constant expertise at the state level that towns can lean on. I mean, especially towns that don't have staff, or have very limited staff. I mean, you know, I looked at the list, yeah, a couple days ago, of the 200-plus towns that don't, don't have zoning districts. They don't have any zoning, 202 towns. You know, there's a whole different world out there. And, so.
Counselor Bradley?
I was interested. You included in, you know, your reasoning for the bill, the observation that emissions, transportation and emissions were, excuse me, transportation was the highest source of emissions in the state. At least in this town, it would seem to me that the bill is going to open up affordable housing in, into rural areas where it's currently prohibited, which would put transportation further out in, and we're sort of focused on having affordable, we want affordable housing in this town. I mean, this, this, you're not running into any, you know, buzzsaw here, but we're focused on the downtown, and one of the reasons is emissions, so that we can concentrate it here and we can keep people in the, in the commercial and residential area that's within walking, riding, you know, healthy communication with our town. So, I'm curious to what the connection is between transportation and emission, as you see it as a rationale for the bill.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the, the first piece is taking existing, existing homes and, and not, not taking up additional lots that are empty and having units added to those lots when they can be added into homes that already exist, or they can be attached to an existing structure, or added in the backyard.
And that will reduce the amount of transportation that a community will encourage if it does that in those lots?
Well, I think, I think the idea is you have people who already have homes that are built, most likely in, in areas that are already concentrated with residential, and you're, you're maximizing the lots that have already developed, have already developed units.
How does that, I'm, I'm arguing, I'm just curious to see how that, how you see that reducing transportation and emissions?
Well, I don't, I don't know specifically in Freeport, but I imagine most of your residential units are located in closer proximity to each other.
Okay.
And then, and then when you go with the empty lots, so on this, on this section, we're making sure that denser, denser developments, when you have more units on the lot, we're making them, we're requiring that they're located in growth areas. So, I don't know if your comprehensive plan designates growth areas, but if it does, then allowing the triplex, allowing the fourplex in the growth area, so that you're, you're, you're incentiv, or, yeah, you're incentivizing the development of these, these additional units on lots that are located in your growth area, rather than in areas that you have not designated as growth areas. So, you might want to take
Or connected to water and sewer, which we have a very finite amount of.
Right, right.
On that, though, is it only connected to water and sewer if we didn't have a comprehensive plan?
Yes, I think it's, I think it's either, it's an or, not a and, correct, not an and/or.
So, that would cover non-growth areas in Freeport that are also on water and sewer? Because those aren't necessarily the same thing, but they are in dense areas, so.
Yeah.
Be good, I would think. Is that, is that the interpretation?
Yeah, so if you have a comprehensive plan that designates growth areas, they would only be able to be built in your growth area, even if
If you don't.
Even if they're, even if they're on a lot that isn't in the growth, growth area, but is connected to public water and sewer.
Excellent, thank you.
So, thank you for, for coming to talk to us about it, but more importantly, thanks for proposing the bill, because I agree 100%. We have a housing crisis in, in the state, and I think, as has been mentioned, we're pretty eager, so I'll brag a little bit, that even though we're a small town, we're putting 200 units of housing on the market this year, and we've been, for the last two years, studying our core area, our village core, our downtown area, and spending a decent amount of money and a tremendous amount of effort on visioning what that could be in the future, and a lot of that vision includes housing, housing and more housing. So, you know, to Counselor Bradley's point about keeping the, the transportation accessible and building a neighborhood here, you know, we've been told that if we can get up to 2,600 or 3,000 people living downtown, which is, you know, will take as many, many years and decades to do, then that creates a vibrant, walkable, thriving neighborhood. So, you know, we're not going to do that in a year, but we do have a lot of plans to try and encourage growth here, as opposed to growth, too much growth in, in the rural residential zones. So, again, to Counselor Bradley's point, you know, I'd rather see 1,000 units here rather than double the number of units we have on the edges of town where you've got to drive five miles just, just to get a cup of coffee or some groceries. So, you know, they're, they're minor tweaks, but I, I think something is better than nothing. So, I, I think in some ways, the bill doesn't even go far enough, you know, we don't have a growth cap.
I won't speak to some of the ways you can circumvent the law, because
Yeah.
Be giving away trade secrets, but I'm sure we'll run into that in the future.
Yeah, yeah, we found, yeah.
We found them all over.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and I wish they weren't
I hope you won't, I hope you won't, but
Staff isn't necessarily recommending them to the council.
Why not?
That's, that's one of my concerns is, I don't think there's a ton of impacts in here to Freeport. There are a few that may be concerning or may be really good, but the scaled down, or I won't want to say scaled down, but the revised, as it gets revised, took out a lot of the concerns that were like, whoa, initially, which were going pretty, they would have made substantial changes in Freeport to what was buildable. However, municipal, my main concern is municipalities that are taking steps actively, which we aren't, I hope, I hope that people don't think we are, to confound affordable housing development.
Right.
You know, to make requirements, there are, what I just hinted at, there were ways that you could still put some requirements in your zoning ordinance that could really affect that and really kind of just make so these provisions don't work. Are you concerned that that might drive those communities that are taking that position to take those steps, which would then make not just affordable housing in their communities less accessible, but also make just bad planning, because it'll increase dimensional standards, increase density requirements, things like that, for all? That, that would be my concern.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, of course
That's a real big argument, but I mean
The bill links it to the single-family lot, so, I mean, they, they would be making life really difficult for folks who also want single-family housing, which I think would probably not be something they would want to do, I hope. Like I said, there, there certainly could be ways that the law could be circumvented, but I also think some of those, some of, so for example, minimum lot size is one thing we don't address in the bill, and that could certainly be something that towns utilize to basically take the, the wind out of the sails of this, of this legislation. I hope they don't, but I also don't think there was a way we could have put language in this bill around minimum lot size that would have at all satisfied the masses, so.
That would have been a real one-size-fits-all.
Yeah.
You would have actually been creating a serious one with that, yeah.
Right, right. So, you know, I guess I'm, I will appeal to the better angels of our municipal leaders across the state and hope that, that, that that's not the case, and if it, if it, if it is, and it seems like there's a real challenge with this law not having had the impact it should have, then I think, you know, the, the future legislature that, that I won't be a part of can, can think about that. I am termed out and headed, headed off into the sunset, so.
Did you have another question, Council Bradley?
I'm not sure, I'm just coming to this, you know, so I'm not sure how I feel about the whole thing, but let's say that we didn't want to increase the opportunity for affordable housing out in the sticks where I live in rural district two. We thought that that, that the better thing to do was to do it in town. We are going to do it in town, I'm not sure how we feel about it out in the districts. But it, could we, could we get an incentive in the sense of we don't have to make the changes if we do a certain amount of affordable housing in the downtown as we planned to do?
Yeah, so, so the, the only, the, the density bonus only applies to your growth area or to, if you don't have a growth area, to the places where water and sewer exists. So the density bonus, which is, which is the piece that is explicitly attached to affordable housing, would only be linked to your growth area or in, in other cases, I mean, since.
How does that work? I don't understand it.
So, so the density bonus would only apply.
Density bonus, could you just go back down a little to the dummy?
Yeah, 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 so, so you're taking the base density, so if you have a one-acre lot and you allow, let's say you allow four units on that one-acre lot, up to four units. And this is, and it's, and if it's located in the growth area, in Freeport's case, since you have growth areas, it would have to be located in your growth area. You would take the base density, so four units, times two and a half, and that would get the developer up to 10 units on that lot. If they meet, if, if 50, more than 50% of those units are designated as affordable, meeting the, the income requirements, and they agree to a restrictive covenant of at least 30 years. Perhaps I, I.
That's, that's a good explanation.
So that would be, and that would only be in your growth area. So this, this density bonus could not be taken advantage of in the rural parts of your community unless you designate.
In the growth area.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there a way that, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, please.
Is there a way, say, that if we were to do as we planned to do, let's say, 200 units in the downtown on Depot Street, it's on, it's on the drawing board, no money, no plans and no developer, but good idea. So, but if, say we got, we actually got it done, that would, then we wouldn't need, we wouldn't be required to open up that kind of density bonus in the growth area. Is there a connection between affordable housing you actually create in your town and the opportunity to create it in an area you may not want to see it?
I guess the question would be whether or not, I, I would, I, I guess the question would be whether or not the developer, so are you taking, are you taking land that is currently not residential in this area? So this, this area is not currently residential?
Potentially.
Nothing there.
Zoned for residential.
Zoned for residential, and you would want, you want to develop it, is what you're saying?
Looks that way.
And you want to build 200 units on that, on that, in that area?
I picked it out of the.
Okay, is it, it's not, so.
I think what he's asking is, if we put forward a big push to do affordable housing, could there be a trade-off where you're giving us local control back?
Yeah, yeah.
Because we're doing what you're asking, but we get to control how we do it versus allowing everything in your bill?
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Is there like a subsection of the bill that's like, if you can meet these performance standards, the bill doesn't apply to you or town? Is that what you're asking?
Thank you.
No, the bill, I mean, the, the bill doesn't, the, the bill doesn't provide for that opportunity, but I think at the end of the day, the likely, the likelihood of you realizing those 200 units on that lot that you want to develop probably will be enhanced. The op, the likelihood that they are developed will probably be enhanced by this density bonus than if the density bonus didn't exist. Because, because the numbers don't work otherwise. For, for developers.
It's kind of, I mean, I think we're talking about a moot point because there is no density requirement in the district you're talking about. Your, the concept is good, but in our village centers, we actually don't have a density requirement.
Okay, and the bill, and that density, the density bonus section only.
Wouldn't do anything there.
Is only applicable where there's already density requirements.
I, I had a more basic question about the version that I think we were looking at from last week, you're probably seven versions after that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Are the original, somewhere in the chain of bills, there was the requirement that the density bonus would apply anywhere in a multifamily district? Is that gone now and into the growth zone? Is that what you were just saying?
We still use that, we still use that language because there was concern, I'm trying to remember. There was concern that. Yeah, we still, we still keep it there, we still keep it, we still keep the, the language multifamily, which we don't define in the bill.
That's what, that's going to be the follow-up question, yeah.
I, I remember that question from the email, but it would be, so it would rely on whatever, whatever the municipality's definition of a multifamily.
Okay.
Where multifamily, where multifamily housing is allowed. So in some communities, they don't distinguish between single-family and multifamily, all those towns that I talked about, the 202 without zoning. So where multifamily housing is allowed will be, in those communities will be their entire community.
Right.
But they, but it will only apply if they have a density requirement. So if they don't have, if they don't have a density requirement, then the density bonus is not applicable.
So Freeport would have some decisions to make in our zoning ordinance to define those terms in order to target the density requirements of the law to areas where we want multifamily development?
Right, right.
So. Right, so that was one of the concerns, I think, in the original reading was would being able to put a triplex out in the rural zone or a three-unit out in the rural zone automatically mean all of our rural zones would be open to a 2.5 times density bonus? Where it would do some substantial increases.
Which they won't, which they won't be because the bill says that in lots where the density is one unit, the municipal ordinances shall, shall so, shall still consider those, those, those lots as single-family. So they shall still be zoned as single-family, so basically, for all intents, all intensive purposes, these areas are still single-family. So we're not eliminating single-family zones, we're basically creating an overlay that's, that still uses that as a distinguishing.
What about duplexes? Because we don't technically have a single-family zones, there are, all of our rural zones are duplexes here. We don't, we don't have a single-family zone in town, everything is duplex with an ADU allowed already in our rural zones.
That is a really good point, I'd have to look at the bill.
Maybe we'll talk afterwards.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, we can, I don't need to take, I don't need to take the public in the council's time. Well, it's because there have been create, I think it's because there have been creative ideas probably over the past 20 years to already try to address these things here, like the ADU, the language in the bill does, would not affect our, barely all our ADU standards, because we allow ADUs anywhere in residential zones already, which is great.
Yeah.
So not a lot of concerns there, but just the technical, a few of the little technical points, and I'm not, I swear, I'm not trying to stump you. This is a pretty ambitious bill, I just want to make sure that we're not.
So just for clarity, in, in, on, on any given lot, you allow for duplex to be built?
Uh, not in every lot, but in all of our rural zones, where, which are limited to primarily residential, which is like 75% of the town, duplex is an allowable use by permit, not.
And there are density, there's a.
There's a slightly higher density requirement for duplex, I think it's like, in some of the rural zones, it's like three acres for duplex.
The section of, the section would actually not apply because it's wherever dense, it's wherever the density requirement does not allow for more than one unit. Let me pull, let me pull up.
Oh, interesting, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it's like the inverse, right?
Yeah.
We say you don't have one, this says, no, you can do.
It's the inverse of it, yeah.
If we don't have one, it says, we have one that says you have more than one.
It doesn't apply.
Doesn't apply.
Right, because we're already allowed to.
Because we're already, yeah.
Where ahead he is, Mr. Speaker.
I was going to say, yeah.
No, but this, this is why this, I think we got questions from, like, why are we having this? This is why it's important, because we need to, I think, make sure that it's not going to blow up what we've already tried to accomplish, which.
Yeah, so it's, it's this section here, notwithstanding any provision of law, to the contrary, for any area in which housing density is limited to no more than one dwelling unit per lot, a municipality shall allow structures of, and this is actually, this is actually changed to two.
So that would be for single-family zones, essentially, that would apply.
And since we don't have any single-family zones, it doesn't apply, yeah.
Well, I don't even know why I came here today.
I mean, we make a joke about it, but this is exactly why we're here tonight.
Yeah.
Because Freeport is doing an amazing job ahead of the curve, I've always said that, and this bill is maybe not as applicable to Freeport as some other municipalities, but also it's a really good conversation to have to make sure that we are either aligning or maybe slightly diverging, but the overall intent.
Hello, so the overall intent is just to check in and have this conversation and clarifying questions and so that the Speaker of the House knows how amazing.
I'm impressed.
I think it's important to echo John's point from earlier in the night that he made. The, the politics and the spectrum of this are a little bit confusing because you're actually taking away government restriction on what people can do on their property. So to the extent that zoning is a taking, it can be justified, but it's a taking of your rights to do something on your property, you're actually prohibiting municipalities from putting those restrictions, restrictions in place and taking it. It's, it's not going all the way towards libertarian, but it's a very libertarian move.
Well, I've, I've made some friends across the aisle with this bill, so. And, you know, I, as I, I, I've kept, I have countered the, the local control argument. I, I actually think this is a, this is the most local control you can possibly give to a community because it puts the control in the hands.
Of the owners.
Of people who own property, and if they want to build an ADU in their backyard, so long as they meet some basic fundamental requirements that make sense because they, because they do, then they should be able to build the ADU in their backyard for their mom, who doesn't want to live in an assisted living facility, or their son, who's coming home from college and can't afford the $2,000 rent in Portland.
Or is there a $2,000 rent?
A $2,400 rent in Portland, whatever it might be these days.
Three.
They're, they're more than welcome to move to Biddeford, though.
But if you take the earlier conversation.
Thank you, Jake. It's hard to remember all the things you're going to say and to push the button, so Jake's here. So apparently this doesn't apply to us because we already allow it, so all the arguments you're making, we've headed off, I mean, we.
Except the density bonus would apply.
In some zones.
But we already allow unlimited density in most of our core zones anyway.
Our village, so it would apply to.
Route one north.
It would apply to growth zones where we currently have density requirements, multifamily and growth zones. This would impose a bonus on them, yeah.
But is that density a minimum or a maximum?
It would remove some of our density requirements, it would lower some of our density requirements.
If we're building affordable.
Right, so it would increase what we.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, yeah.
But it wouldn't take away the other things, dimensional standards, setbacks, height restrictions, things like that that are probably going to be, in most cases, your limiting factor.
Yeah.
Before you hit the 2.5 at least.
Yeah.
Bonus.
So if anyone wants to come talk to Freeport about how to encourage housing, by all means, send them our way. We're already a step ahead, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Bragging a little bit, I think we've been doing a really good job, and I think this is in line with what we've been doing, so.
And do you all have a growth cap?
We do not have a growth cap, we have duplexes everywhere, we allow ADUs pretty much everywhere, and we don't have any density requirements downtown. So a lot of the stuff that you're proposing, I think, is stuff we've already got. We do.
Compared to what other towns have.
Yeah.
So I mean, we're proud of that.
Yeah, we'll be approving the report later.
I also want to shout out not only to that, but the incredible staff and, and thank the Speaker for putting in the technical assistance grants and the planning pieces because I do think that's timely, and I will be following up. Councilor Pillsbury and making sure that this summer, if those, those grants come out, that, that information is to the town manager because I do think that that is incredibly helpful. We may be ahead of the curve, but we still have a lot of work to do, and all of the work that you're doing so collaboratively with this community and having these conversations and making sure that everybody is informed along the way, I think is really, really important. And I think it's Saturday is the next piece of the downtown visioning, I have to put in a plug for that, Councilor Pilch, if that's.
Thank you, Representative Sacks. Yes, Saturday, the Saturday from 11 to 2, we have an open house with our consultants who've been kind of painting a new vision for what downtown could look like, including a lot more housing. And we've got a local food truck owner who would be happy to serve us food if you, if you do come and want to buy a taco. If you're in town, happy to buy a taco and have you see how, how we're doing things in Freeport? But yeah, it's a great opportunity to kind of see how we can encourage dense growth in a really smart way, so, in my opinion. Thank you for.
Thank you, thank you for having me, appreciate it.
Sharing your time with us.
Thanks very much for coming, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Sacks, for arranging that and making that happen, appreciate it. And if any, if people do, as Representative Sacks mentioned earlier, if you have questions, follow-up, feel free to reach out to the council or Representative Sacks directly, she offered her cell phone number and email and all that, so she's a great resource to, to plug into the Speaker and the goings-on, so good luck.
Is there a proposed timeline for action on the bill to target?
So, yes, before adjournment, it's supposed to be April 20th. As you heard, the bill's going back to the committee on Thursday, so it means there's more language revisions. We're meeting every day next week, Monday through Friday, and then the subsequent three days after that. So somewhere in there, the bill will be heard, which is why we wanted to bring it to you today so that you have a good sense. And I look forward to your feedback, whatever questions or feedback that you might have for me that you didn't want to bring forward today. I'm happy to, to talk with you about it.
I guess I'm surprised you didn't ask for an endorsement or anything from us.
Again, as you said, this is a lot of information, I assumed you might want some time to think about it, and then you can certainly, again, you can talk about it and vote here, or you can just let me know how you feel about it afterwards.
If anything comes up that we missed that's major red flag, I'm sure to reach out to you, or if the council brings anything to me, I'll be sure to forward it along.
Yeah, I always take feedback, Council Bradley, as you well know, at any time. Your speech, and that, ladies and gentlemen, should be in the minutes. Council Bradley was speechless. I bid you goodnight, thank you so much to all of you again for your time and attention to this issue, and as always, so glad to work with you.
Thanks again for coming. All right, so we are still in our information exchange part of our agenda, which is a little longer than usual, but for good reason. So I'll open up anyone who has information to share about boards, committees, or other goings-on around town. I have a few things, but anybody else go first if they want to. Council Bradley?
Two things, one is the Island Rover, which is still moving forward, we've met with staff here. We've considered a letter, got, we've received from a council for the Island Rover, and we're developing a response that I would like to bring to us, not next Tuesday, but the Tuesday afterwards, because I'm away on vacation.
Our next full meeting is the 19th, which is two weeks from today.
Okay, that's when I'd like to do it, and then at that meeting, we would be asking you to, to respond positively to what we present or not. In other words, it'll be, it'll be a meeting where we either go forward or we just give up, sort of, as I see it. You may decide differently once you hear it, but that's that. The other is the, the sewer group met, and had, I thought, a very productive meeting, which led to a, we were joined by Mark Winter from Senator Collins' office, who was just spectacular in terms of presenting to us earmarks, the options for earmarks, the opportunities for earmarks, and instantaneously, the sewer group and the council and the FEDC sort of commissioned an effort to apply for earmarks for the sewer district in Brett, and FEDC immediately picked up on that and started producing letters and an application using Woodard. I've never seen anything happen so quickly in my life, in my life in this town, and so I, I think we should all be happy that that's, that's going forward. That's the end of me.
Thank you. Councilor Pillsbury?
Uh, just to tie into that, it would happen so quickly, the deadline is the end of this week, so. But I, they're on it, they know what they're doing, I think it's a really positive step for everybody.
Great, yeah, so big shout-out to Brett Richardson, who is our new executive director at Freeport Economic Development Corporation. He's three weeks into the job, I think, and already making a big difference, and I think he's on the call with us to, tonight, so, thank you, Brett. Uh, Council Egan?
Uh, two quick things, one, the appointments committee met recently to fill a couple of vacancies on the planning board and the project review board, and so those names will be coming forward for official appointments. And just in general, they'll put the plug out that we are still always looking for interested residents and citizens to join the many different groups and boards and commissions that we have in our community. There's still several vacancies that have actually been carried on for a while because we don't have enough applicants. So if anybody's interested in learning more and you have a particular subject area, contact the clerk, Chris Wolf, and there's a very, very simple, one-side-of-one-page application form where you get to put down what you'd like to do, and we can find a place for you. I attended yesterday one of the many Freeport Climate Action Now meetings, it was virtual. This one happened to be focused on transportation, I'm just responding that that group is. I'm just responding that that group is organically coming out of our community, not associated with the council. They're coordinating directly and extensively and repeatedly with our sustainability committee, so there's not a conflict, there's a coordination and collaboration there. And it's just exciting to see dozens of people involved with that work and, and raising the awareness of the issue. Very timely this week with reports coming out internationally about how much time we do or don't have before we can make absolute changes to our carbon consumption before it's too late. So I'm excited to hear that and see that and just encourage people, if you are looking for a way to be inspired about how you might get involved in things going on at a small scale to make a big difference, Freeport Climate Action Now is one of those.
Awesome, thank you. I got a couple of things. One, a quick shout out to the drama crew at our Freeport High School who took first place in the One App competition with their production of Agatha Christie's The Patient, which was very enjoyable, very well done. So that was in Camden a week or two ago. Second, mountain bikes at Hedgehog Mountain. So the New England Mountain Bike Association has proposed adding, paying for and adding some mountain bike trails to Hedgehog Mountain. They met with the Conservation Commission a week or two ago to sort out next steps. The Conservation Commission would like to study, there are some sensitive areas around the summit that the Conservation Commission wants to study a little bit before they go ahead with the trail, so they, they're undertaking that during this growing season, which means the spring, summer, fall. So it might take a while for them to sort out and finalize the new management plan for Hedgehog Mountain. But we're trying to encourage the discussions to happen while they're looking at that plan. So we're looking at scheduling a workshop and inviting the Conservation Commission to come to the council at their next meeting, along with the Mountain Bike Association, so that the public has a chance to really come and weigh in, see the plan, take a look at it. Conservation Commission will get a sense for how popular or unpopular it is, and we can, we can ask questions and all that, and then the Conservation Commission will go back after that. So if you guys are okay with that, that would be June 14th is the date we're proposing, which is a Tuesday in June when we're not ordinarily having a meeting. That's the next, or that's a time when the Conservation Commission would be meeting anyway. So instead of having them meet separately, we'd invite them to come here and do a joint workshop. So unless there's any objections, I'd like to add that workshop to our calendar.
My, my question is, I got a, I got a, at the last time we talked about this, that there was some time issues, and does this meet that funding and timing concerns expressed?
The timing, I think, is around the funding, because people have made commitments to donate pretty significant amounts of money, and I think they were nervous that they would lose the funding if the project didn't move forward. So I think the challenge to us as a town is to show signs of progress and say, yes, this is not being killed, but rather we're, we're refining it and we just need a little bit more time. So we asked the question, I don't have a definitive answer, but we said, hey, can you follow up and let us know if there is a hard deadline that we need to meet for the funding, let us know, and they were going to look into that. But my, my sense, my hope is that as long as we show continued forward momentum and show our response in this to the project as a whole, that the funding won't go away.
Can, can, can we determine that before we wait until June to hold this meeting? Because if we're going to lose that money, wouldn't we move more quickly?
Yeah, I mean, we, I know they, we're planning on spending the balance of this year, constructing all summer, you know, into the fall anyway, so I know the funding's not expiring in the next matter of weeks. It was at least meant to go.
I understand, but it's a matter of commitment, not whether it's there. And again, I don't know what I'm talking about. I don't, I just want to be sure that, because we're waiting until June, we don't lose the opportunity for the significant funding that's available.
We've asked the question, I'm sure if, if that's an issue, they would come back to us and let us know that that's an issue.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor Daniele?
I guess I'm also worried about, like, momentum and motivation and everything, so could we do it sooner? Like, why can't we do this in two weeks, three weeks? You know what I mean? Like, why, why does it have to be June, I guess? Versus, like, could we approve the majority of the plan minus just the summit portion? And then they could start building the trails, so that way, hey, start over in this section where we know we're all good, and then we'll see how many trails we can get to the top.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to speak out of turn because it's, you know, not my decision to make, but if, depending on how much of the summit they have access to, or parts of the summit, if they don't have the elevation gain needed for the trails, then building a bunch of trails on the flat ground is less appealing. So that summit area is, is kind of crucial to the whole plan coming into play. But the summit's not a point, it's an area.
Right.
They've got to figure out how much of the summit, or how close to the summit, or more significantly, how much elevation gain they can have access to. But yes, I'd like to move things along. I'm happy to go back to them and say, can you do it sooner? I was partly responding to our schedule, because we're kind of here every Tuesday through mid-May as it is, and also responding to the fact that they need some time to sort out a joint plan to come to the table with, because now there's two different plans, the Mountain Bike Association's plan, Conservation Commission is kind of working up their own plan, and I'd like to give them some time to come to together to say, this is the plan that they would both support and can present to the public and advertise.
In June.
And June, I think, would give them enough time to do that, so that's two months.
Has NIMBA okayed waiting until June to find out?
I don't know, they weren't at the meeting, they couldn't make the meeting. They, they would have loved to have been there, but it was kind of short notice and they weren't able to make it.
Because it does seem like, you know, they were considering, like, hey, we'd like to get started in four weeks.
Yeah, yeah, they, yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you have any other info other than what I've shared?
No, I don't have an update. I know that there was a target to do construction this, this construction season.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if this rules it out, but it pushes it back for sure, the timeline.
Most likely, yeah.
But I think the Conservation Commission also feels like they need that time to do the analysis of what's on the ground, so. And Dan and I were at that meeting and we were kind of advocating for taking the least amount of time necessary, making sure they do a thorough job and do the.
It's live, so.
They, they really want to update the management plan. I think the problem is the management plan for the property is supposed to be updated five years, and it's been 19 years or 15 years or something. Not the end of the world, no one's, it's an internal plan, but it's also not up to date. For example, like, there's plant species that listed of concern that have, you know, in the 15 years since have no longer are of concern, they're now prevalent and, you know, things like that, so.
Yep.
The main, the main delay, I think, was updating, for them, was updating their management plan, which should be kind of done as a volunteer effort.
Yep. And we'll say that they're paying a lot of attention to how the property is being used today, so a lot of people go there, go up to the summit, come back down, and that's the most popular kind of use of the, of the property. And they're trying to minimize the impact on that. There's plenty of room elsewhere, so they're encouraging the Mountain Bike Association to say, use as much of the area as you can, but try and avoid conflicting with, with the primary uses. But if you have questions, or if the public has opinions, questions to share, the Conservation Commission would love to hear them. If you have trouble getting ahold of them, feel free to reach out to me or the other councillors, I'm sure we could pass feedback along. But yeah, I'll, I'll ask about having a workshop sooner, if we have time for it in our schedule, but in the meantime, would you be okay with adding that June 14th workshop date as a, as a backup, unless we can't do it sooner?
Yeah, I think as a backup, that's good, but I mean, personally, I'm eager, just, especially with everything else we've got going on and connect Freeport and everything, like, this, to me, fits very nicely, so I'd like to see if it's a potential.
Yeah, and they're, they're willing to, to pay for it all, so no cost to the town so far, so, yeah, I'll, I'll see if we could push it up sooner. Do we need to formally vote to add that to the calendar, or is this consensus good enough?
Just, one, somebody, you can throw, throw a motion on, right? This would be an additional meeting, or it would be at that meeting?
Additional workshop for us. We don't have a workshop scheduled for June 14th.
I would take a motion and a vote, I think, and just put it on the, Chris, to amend the schedule, does that sound good? Council's scheduled to add a workshop 6:00 PM on June 14th, is that the idea?
Yep, yep. So I'll, I'll move to add a workshop to the town council calendar on June 14th in conjunction with the Conservation Commission, 6 o'clock on, on June 14th, to discuss mountain bike trails.
I'll second that.
Do you need to get a, something to meet in on?
I'm told. All in favor of adding the workshop date?
Aye.
Thank you, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Councilor Egan? Seconded that. Thank you, and I'll follow up at the next meeting if I have any more updates on that. One other quick thing, the farmer's market that I've talked about before is getting closer to, to happening. We've got, I think, 11 vendors signed up for a Friday afternoon farmer's market here at Town Hall. Town Hall would normally be closed on Friday, it would be closed on Fridays, but we can use the, the parking lot and hopefully the adjacent lot for the farmer's market. We've got two folks associated with Freeport Climate Action Now who have kind of offered to take over and the management of it, which is not insignificant. So they've already lined up the vendors, they've got the insurance stuff lined up, they're talking about restrooms and food trucks and permits. They've made a request, which I support, for some seed funding, just to get it off the ground, to print some banners, to get some publicity, to deal with the initial insurance. Over time, it should be a self-sustaining venture, but in the first year, they need a little bit of money to, to get it off the ground. I think it's, it's great for the town. I don't think it's a great deal of money, they've asked for up to $2,500. They might not need it all, but that would go a long way towards allowing them to, to kind of confirm a, a bunch of things that they're still tentative on. I'm told that we, we have the money and the budget, we just need approval, consent from us to, to say that that's a decent use of money.
Some moved.
So, I don't even know, we need to form a motion on it, but.
I take it back.
Any questions? Nods of support, thumbs up, thumbs down? I got a thumb up?
All in favor, yeah.
Thumb up, the thumb up. Okay.
Farmer's market.
Is that what you need?
Sounds like everyone wants the farmer's market and everyone I've talked to, so.
Okay, and for not a lot of money, we get quite a bit of bang for our buck. And the last item I have, I'm going to call on Joyce Vayou to help me out with. It's about the Police Advisory Committee. Joyce is the chair of that committee and had an announcement relating activities to that committee, so I, rather than having me do that third-hand, I would ask her to.
Let's just do a mic check. Joyce would be joining us remotely. Joyce, can you speak?
I can speak. I have that ability.
Okay, there you go. We don't have a, a nice picture of you, so we'll leave you blank on the screen, but we're all listening, go ahead.
I, I think I like the blank screen.
We can put your picture up.
So the police, no, the Police Advisory Committee is in the beginning stages of working with the police department here in Freeport and looking at the possible usage of a mental health coordinator, social worker, there could be several titles. In that vein, we have a guest coming to our next meeting, which is the 18th of April at 6:00 PM. It'll be there in the town chambers, and it is Joe Friedman, who is the mental health coordinator for Westbrook and Portland. She was part of the team that started their whole program. Her schedule is very tight, so I'm putting the invitation out, so if any of the councillors would love to come and join us and listen to her presentation, I don't know if or when we would ever be able to get her back. So that's April 18th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. That is all I've got. Unless anyone has any other information exchanged, we'll move on. Seeing none. Our fifth order of business is the town manager's report. Mr. Manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick update, we have openings available, full-time job openings available for zoning administrator and police officer that we're hiring for, still in that process. And we've also have an opening for a seasonal grounds maintenance position for the growing season of this year. Detailed postings for all positions are available on the town's website, under Departments, then just click on Employment. Application details are in there as well. And in the employment front, I'd like to welcome our newest employee who we just onboarded this afternoon, who's not starting until next week, and that's Luke Chapman. He's going to be joining the Public Works Department starting next week. And also want to congratulate Kim McClellan from the library, who was recently promoted from a part-time position to a full-time position at the library that was vacant. Luke actually is, grew up in Freeport, he still has family here, but doesn't live here anymore, but he's coming back to work for us. And Kim has been an employee at the library for about six years now. So both of them have some good Freeport ties, and we're excited to have him onboard. And just an update to the council, staff submitted plans for consideration at the project review board meeting at the end of this month, so it's, I think, on the 27th of April, to re-up the pop-up skateboard park from last summer, which was immensely popular and had, I don't think it maybe a few little minor issues, but created no significant issues for the three months it was operating. That's in the furthest corner of the train station parking lot. A lot of people, about when the snow melted, started contacting us, saying, is that on the table, is that on the table? That's proposed to be longer this year for about six-month period, weather permitting, so the project review board actually has to consent to that. If it's a, a, it's not going to be a permanent site plan change, but it would be a temporary activity that goes longer than the allowed period of time. So that'll be in front of the project review board. So anybody out there who's interested that wants to, I don't think there'll be much discussion on it, but it will be up for, for at least public review. And the proposed timeline would be from approximately the first of May or the first week in May, depending how quickly that that could get set up, to about the same time as last year, so the end of October, which is when we typically have to get ready for, at least prepare for snow plowing in that area. So, and lastly, this is quickly developing, but we're gearing up for the return of our patriotic holiday season this year. If everything stays nice and under control, we would not have very many concerns about public gatherings as we have in the past two years. I probably just shot us in the foot by even saying that out loud, but I'm, I'm going to say it anyways, so Memorial Day is up next, and I've, I'm going to say this out loud because somebody just agreed to it, but it will be organized this year. The town will be doing the, Town Hall will be doing the ceremony as we have in the past, but our friends at the Chamber of Commerce have agreed to help us out on the parade organization. I don't think former councillor Whitney knew that she was going to get, if I say it out loud, she has to do it, right, if she volunteered, so. So that'll be up next week. We'll have details about what the timing will be and also who to contact if you have questions about those, how to sign up. We'll be obviously trying to get some speakers, and they'll be working with the different groups to get them in the parade and then down at the ceremony. So it's been a couple of years, it's been two years without a Memorial Day celebration, and we had something of 4th of July last year, so we're working on, you know, starting to plan for that too, which will be about a month later. Give you some details in probably about a month on where people can, groups can sign up and get in touch for 4th of July activities. So I do know that the private businesses are planning a lot of the traditional 4th of July events for this year. The, the L.L. Bean race, the, I think it's a 5K, right, the road race is on 10K. The 10K is, thank you, is in planning and moving forward. Fireworks are in planning moving forward and the parade, hopefully we're planning right now to do it, so unless anything crazy happens, stay tuned and we'll, we'll give you more details in about the next month on 4th of July. That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you to our newly invigorated Chamber of Commerce for making that happen, that's Our next item of business is public comment. We have a good showing from the public tonight, thank you for coming. This is your opportunity, either in person or on Zoom, to step up to the podium, raise your electronic hand, and talk about anything that's not on our agenda. If you're here to talk about something that is on our agenda, we ask that you hold your comments till we get to that item on the agenda, if there's public comment allowed for that. But if you want to talk about anything else, this is a good time. We ask you to keep your comments short, three minutes or so, and it's not a, a time for Q and A or detailed debate, but more just a, a time to share your thoughts and opinions if you do have things you'd like us to, to look into. So with that, who would like to start? Come up to the podium, tell us who you are, what you want to talk about. Anybody on Zoom who's got an electronic hand up?
Nope. I think there are at least three of the four people I know that are here to speak about stuff coming or do media coverage for us, so.
Need a last-minute boost of confidence to overcome some shyness and go up to the podium, or?
I think we got a couple, we got a couple of public hearings here, so I think some people are here to speak.
Good. Then I think we're ready to move on from the public comment to our seventh order of business, where we do a lot of our action. And the seventh order of business is to take action on the following items of business as read by the Chair. The first of which is our Consent Agenda, which has a new item on it that might not have made it to the printed materials. For the appointment section, there were two appointments on there already, one for Mitch Rudolph for the Planning Board and one for Nelson Larkins for the Shellfish Commission. In addition, our clerk has asked that we add Ford Reiki, who would be reappointed to the Project Review Board for a term from now through March 31st of 2023. So there would be three appointments. Did I do that right? Okay. So in addition to those appointments, there's a liquor license renewal, a resignation from the Police Committee, and two donations to the library on the Consent Agenda. So the first question is, is there any item that you would like removed from the Consent Agenda to discuss as an individual item? Or are we content to leave the Consent Agenda as is? Seeing no objections, I would move that the, be it ordered, the April 5th, 2022 Consent Agenda be adopted.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence, for seconding that. Are there any other discussion about the Consent Agenda? All those in favor of adopting the Consent Agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. You can fill in the clerk when she's back about that. Okay, we're onto the capital program. This is a public hearing on our five-year capital program for fiscal year 2023. We have our Finance Director here, Counselor Pillsbury. Would you like to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I make a motion to open the public hearing on the capital program for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're now in public hearing. Is there anything that you want to introduce first, Jessica, or would you like to wait until the public hearing's over and then we could talk about it?
I'm going to wait till the public hearing's over, sure.
Okay. So is there anybody who wants to ask questions, share thoughts about the five-year capital program, which I assume is on the website and on the back table there? So this is the plan for how we're going to spend our capital budget over the next five years, including what we're going to spend this upcoming year. And this drives how much money we kind of stash away into capital reserves or savings in a way. Anybody? Zoom, oh, we have a hand.
I'd like to welcome back to the party Ms. Vayou from out on Lower Flying Point. How are you doing, Joyce?
I'm doing well. I take it you can still hear me?
Yes, for better or for worse.
That's right. So I think that the, a lot of time and effort was done in the budget, and I appreciate that. I have a suggestion, though, under Municipal Facilities article, under the proposed FY 2023 budget, I think with the increase in the number of residents that we have coming to Freeport and that we hope to bring into Freeport with our revisioning of downtown, that we need to start looking at some of our municipal facilities, like police and fire and rescue buildings. They're already getting very tight, and they're going to need to be increased, and so perhaps in '23, we need to put some money in to have somebody do a study, come up with some suggestions, whether it's an architectural firm, I believe, I don't, that's not my expertise, but I know from being on the Police Committee, they're already busting at the seams, and it's just going to get worse. So I think we need to plan to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other comments on the capital program? I know we've got some things to discuss up here as well. So seeing no other comments, does somebody want to move to Counselor Pillsbury? Would you move to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I make a motion to close the public hearing on the capital program for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public hearing's now closed. Jessica, would you like to give us an update on where things stand?
So before you, I believe you should have the updated capital improvement plan, or program, and the last page of that is really where, I guess I would like to draw your focus. So the last page is the list of proposed changes that have gone on over the last few weeks where we've been discussing this plan. So you will notice, I'll work from the bottom up, just because the FEDC appropriation, those changes have been applied to the Destination TIF article, and the impact to the current year as requested was $25,000, but wanted to make you aware that the net impact to the five-year plan is an increase of $183,710. So that is reflected in the plan. You can see the impact of that and what it means and how it actually correlates to what we're currently bringing in for revenue under the TIF plan, so you can kind of look at those numbers and see how that plays out. And then the first item is, there was an additional request that came in from ACAF for $25,000 in order to be able to continue their work progress on their, on their facility. And so those are the only two changes that I've been aware of, that have been being discussed or brought forth at this point. I can talk a little bit about some of the questions that were brought up at the last meeting by Counselor Fornier, if that's of desire.
Why don't you lay it all out and then we can chat?
Sure. Sure. So one of the items that was asked about was whether we had the ability to replace the chassis on the Public Works vehicle versus purchasing a new truck. And that is, this is the last truck in the fleet where that really isn't the best option. We've been gearing towards that as we've replaced vehicles in order to be able to do that, given the life expectancy of those units. But this one is one of the older ones, and so the bed bottom of this unit is not stainless, so we would not get the extended life that we would normally get if we were able to replace the chassis like on our newer units. So it's not recommended to go that route for this replacement, but just bringing forth that information to you for discussion.
I do want to add, I think all of the remaining ones that have been replaced have been replaced with a higher grade bed that.
Correct.
The intention is that they may make two, I wouldn't say that they'll make more than two, but there, the intent is that we would try, at least on the next vehicle, to see if the body would make two chassis replacements, and then, you know, roll the other, roll that in going forward to all of the trucks.
Are these rescue ambulance units or?
No, no, these are, these are heavy trucks.
The Public Works.
Dump trucks. Snowplows, heavy snowplows, not the little ones. These are the, essentially the commercial truck chassis with the bed and the wing gear on it.
The other item that I had was if there was the ability for the recycling center to borrow a tractor from another department. And my understanding is, Peter, I think you've had a lengthier discussion.
I'm going to actually, Adam, if you're there, can we ask you to speak on this? There we go. So we've, hold on one second, let me make sure that it's not, there we go.
I can hear you.
All right, go ahead, Adam.
Hi, my name is Adam Bliss. I'm the Town Engineer. I direct the transfer station staff and facility. A question had arose whether the request for the skid steer replacement could be shared with other departments, for example, Building and Grounds and Public Works. So I went back to my staff, Suzanne, whom I'm sure you all know, she does a wonderful job up there, as does Josh and Dylan. We did some homework, and we found it made sense to think about replacing the skid steer with a tractor. And the skid steer that we currently have is from 2003. It's lived its useful life, and it's in pretty bad condition, and that comes anecdotally from our mechanic and Public Works. And by looking at going towards a tractor as opposed to a skid steer, we think we can reduce the capital request to $60,000, so there's some savings there. And by going with a tractor, we would equip it with a bucket, forklift, assaulting machine, and a mower. These are all things that are needed at the transfer station as part of our daily operations. As far as sharing that existing equipment, we do not feel that's a viable option, particularly because we would use that machine for de-icing the facility, which, when it's snowing or sleeting or freezing rain, it's all hands on deck across all three of the departments I've referred to. And so that's the response to the question that was presented to me.
Thanks, Adam. Not seen any questions up here, but I think we'll.
I just want to follow up. So is it my understanding, Adam, that you're suggesting the capital plan be reduced by 10,000?
Yes, we don't, yes. You know, it's a tricky, it's a tricky process to estimate, particularly when, with inflation and, you know, increased prices, but we feel like a reduction of $10,000 to 60 is a safe thing.
From a $70,000 skid steer to a $60,000 tractor?
With attachments, yes.
Well, if we don't spend it, that money would be returned anyway, so if we left it the same, that would just guarantee that you could make the purchase, and that money, if you didn't need it, would just go back anyway, right?
In part, yes, and on a simplistic level. So the little more in-depth is with the actual funding of it. If you put it at 70,000, then I'm coming to you and having to transfer funds, and with the reduced level from fund balance, sorry, I didn't finish my thought, but, you know, we're going to have to come up with the funding sources for the, and granted, this is only 10,000, and I don't mean that loosely, but in the grand scheme of the capital plan, it's 10,000. But just for the overlying process and thought behind it is that, you know, we try to, we try to appropriate and budget to the level requested, because with our funding sources so strained, it's, it becomes another source that we have to try to find to fund, only to then put back. Because like, from an auditing perspective, I have to show and pull all the funding to cover those expenditure levels. And then I have to report back to them what gets returned, you know, and that doesn't happen for three years, because we leave the project, well, a maximum of three years. So if it, you know, if we buy the tractor and we're all done in a year, then yes, next year I would refund that money back into, but, so I guess, you know, overlying, it can be. Would it be my recommendation? No, I would, I would just assume, come back to you with the updated plan for the adoption with that 10,000 taken out.
Quick question, Jessica. The, the version that we have tonight has a manager-proposed and a council-approved column?
Yes.
We haven't actually approved the program.
You haven't approved? I used that column, and I apologize, I should have changed the heading of it. I was just using my template at that, at this point. It was more to be able to show the differences and changes as they've been applied. And so, yeah, you're correct, I should have changed the title of that, but that was the intention, is just to be able to show the difference of what was initially proposed versus what's on the table today.
And that, we're due to have that approval happen at our next regular meeting on April 19th.
Yes, the plan needs to at least be approved at the next meeting.
Yeah. So would anybody have questions about FEDC, ACAF, tractors, dump trucks? Or anything else?
This is.
Go ahead, Adam.
If I could add, and not to belabor the point, in past years, we've hired out mowing of the landfills. We have two landfills, and each has to be mowed twice per year, and our pricing to do that annually has, has come at between $5,000 and $10,000 to hire that out. So we would perform that service in-house, thus saving operational costs, and, which I believe supports the investment in the new equipment, particularly because the old equipment doesn't have or come with a mower attachment.
Save 10,000 in capital expenses and 10,000 in operating expenses. Thank you for saving us money. Counselor Daniele?
During the public comment period, we were looking at the Municipal Facilities page, and under FY 24, it says Public Works Expansion Project. Can you talk about that? Does that maybe relieve some of Joyce's concerns?
Yeah, I'm glad to. I think there, that's one small part of what she was talking about. I think there, if I had to describe staffing just from observing the departments operate, I would say the Police Department is close to 100%. There's no overcrowding, I mean, that's subjective, but there's no, there's enough room to do what the Police Department needs to do, but I would say there's about zero room for growth. Like, if you were to add a program, like if you wanted to add a juvenile program or a mental health counseling and social work program, for example, there's not a place to put that inside the Police Department. That may not need to go into the Police Department, but there's no room really for expansion. The fire station is close to maxed out on the other side of the Public Safety Building, but there's a little bit of room to move things around. There's not a lot of room. But I think the future staffing needs over there are probably less likely to need more room. So I would say number-one priority, Police Station. There are some space concerns at the Public Works facility, which is why that's in there. That's probably the, you know, tied with the fire station for kind of the number-two concern. I would say all of our buildings right now are appropriately sized with little to no room for growth from a staff perspective, including the Town Hall.
I'm just going to interject, the Public Works Expansion Project has been pushed out for the last two years. It's been in that second year for the last two years. So it's been needed, or at least, you know, wanting to be considered for a little bit, and graciously, Earl allows me to push it out, given other.
Yeah, but I think what Joyce was suggesting, I don't want to put words in her mouth, I'm sure she could correct me tomorrow if I'm wrong, but the entire, like, all of the needs, including Public Works, are kind of all on the table at this point, I think.
Yeah.
I don't think any, anyone is more, just from observing them, I don't think anyone is more of an emergency than the others, but they're all basically at full capacity for a lot of our town functions.
And I don't have specifics for you as far as the, what the specific design is or exact need. I would have to reconvene with Earl to get back in discussion of what the, what he was contemplating in that regard, because like I said, it has been on there for a few years, so I can't address your specifics as far as what exactly is looking to be expanded, but I can come back with that if that's, if you would like that information.
My understanding is office space and breakroom, I think, right?
I was going to say, office and breakroom is what kind of sticks in my mind.
Yeah, there's no real administrative room over there either. There, I think there's enough room to work, but that's about it. So, and we are growing in a lot of our departments slightly incrementally, so.
You guys are thinking about this, so your staff recommendation would not be to change anything based on her feedback, right? Like, I just wanted to.
If we had.
Give her a voice.
Yeah, I mean, if we had surplus of money and funds, that would definitely be on my list sooner than it is now for Public Works, probably and the Police Station, and long-term for the Fire Department and the Town Hall.
Some consideration is, I believe one of the eligible uses with ARPA funds is public safety infrastructure, so that may have be, may be of some exploration by council.
You're not going to let that one go, are you?
I brought it up when it was, can I say?
Sorry, that was a little public insight into an ongoing feud over ARPA funding, so, yeah.
Are we talking about ARPA?
Nope.
We weren't until somebody brought it up.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
No, I was just talking about public safety, you know, expansion.
To answer your question, Counselor Daniele, yeah. Counselor Pillsbury?
I was just going to say, to that point, I mean, it is a real issue that we're going to have to decide as we go through the visioning process, and the changes to our town are going to have trickle-down effects, so I think it's a really timely point, but I don't know that we're at the stage where we can include any specific line, Adam, because we don't really know what the changes to our town will be. But we should keep it in the back of our mind as we, as we make these big improvements, it's going to have impacts, so we have to be able to fund those.
I think that's a very good way to put it. We are probably right-sized, at the very top of the right-size category for what we do now. If you told me we needed to, you know, add two or three positions in any one, one or two positions in any of those departments, I, we couldn't, we wouldn't have the space in a lot of those departments, so just something to think about. We don't need to do that right now, but we may need to in five or 10 years, so we need to probably just keep in our minds that we are on the top end of the right size for facilities. Any growth is going to require some incremental growth to our facilities.
More people to support all that housing we committed to earlier.
Maybe. If it requires staff growth, maybe. It may not, though. Maybe. If, if it requires staff growth, maybe. It may not though.
I'll make a, just a quick note on the FEDC part of things. Thanks to Mary Davis's efforts of kind of filling the role of executive director on a volunteer basis. There's some surplus money there for $30,000, $40,000, which I'm hoping they'll kind of keep in reserve that we can maybe use to kind of catalyze some of the downtown projects. So we have our meeting, our workshop with them on May 24th, where we get to spend the whole workshop focusing with FEDC on, on what to do next, downtown plan and otherwise. And so hopefully there'll be a little bit of a surplus there where we can collaborate on, on how to spend that.
So when did we, this is going to the ACAF, when did we talk about, when did we talk about that? I just don't remember it being there, but.
Yeah, sorry, that was a letter that came to me from ACAF asking for it to be added into the plan after we had already presented it to you, which is why it was, it hasn't been discussed at the council level yet. So I didn't want you to be confused.
Okay, and I'm just, so this is the third time we're up to what, $210,000 now that we've put into that as a council? Or possibly here, 75, 20, I remember it was a one-time request when we first did it at 120, right? That's all I'm saying. One of the issues I, I can see is we have other venues that are bringing other types of entertainment to the town. Is that kind of in competition with it?
So just to clarify for process, you have not applied to 25,000 in there. You're looking to us to tell us.
Correct. Because it came in after, yeah, because it came in after, I wait to hear from council on the, on the feel of, of whether or not it's, it's, you know, wanted.
Councilor Egan?
Did the letter specify capital specifics at the facility?
The letter specifies, let's see. I can read the letter. It's a little lengthy, but the last line of it is, it says a grant of 25,000 will help us thrive during our first year of operating Meeting House Arts. And so that's kind of like, the rest of this is more what they've offered, what they offer to the town, what they, the programming that they do. And some of the impacts of, or challenges of COVID. So that's, there's nothing specific, I guess, at that point.
All right. Yeah, other questions, comments? Councilor Daniele?
To that, we fund the chamber, can you just go through, like, how much do we fund the chamber for each year? Top-tier member?
$3,000 a year.
Now it will be 3,000 in this upcoming budget.
And what other organizations do we do that for?
There's a relationship with FEDC where we have several, sorry, not FEDC, FCS. The, the acronyms again to me. It's only eight o'clock. Freeport Community Services, we have both a human service contract with and a rental agreement for sp- use of the building. And we have from time to time provided additional support. So then that's, that's a lot of money per year, but they do provide.
Theirs is a capital reserve investment of 10,000 that is subjective to your approval. Then we have the contracted amount, which is about 30, 40,000, I'm thinking, but it adjusts with, with inflation each year. And then there's the human service component, agency component, which historically has been 16,000 with a request for an additional 5,000 annually. And that they're looking to increase by another 10,000 this year.
And now they do general assistance under contract to us as well.
That's a little different though. I mean, like, like the historical society, how much do we, 10,000 to them?
Well, we do five currently. They're asking for 10.
Yes. And so traditionally, the town has been contributing $5,000 to the historical society for the past several years. 3,000 to the chamber. The town gave a lot more.
1,500 for the chamber.
1,500 moving to 3,000. The town gave a lot more to the chamber in the past, but about seven years ago, we stopped funding them like at the level of FEDC, like 30, $40,000 a year and moved just to a top sponsor level with them. So, and that's really the agencies, the, the nonprofits in town that we support.
Visit Freeport?
Nope. We're not a member. Nope.
We, we sponsor the parade now though, right? The sparkle parade, I thought we added to the budget last year.
Yeah, a little bit. So we provide some, we eat some of the, the costs, the employee cost for them. Yeah. Yeah. So it's a couple thousand dollars a year that in kind, I would say contribute. We do do in kind contributions for some events, like, you know, letting them use space or contributing things, but it's not, it's not much. We don't play a large role in that organization. Similar in size to the chamber, probably a couple thousand dollars worth of value a year.
And that's it.
I guess I was asking just because, you know, we do sponsor other places in town. And I guess I would encourage ACAF to come up with some kind of a funding mechanism like that, where they get community buy-in and have different tiers, like these other organizations have done, you know, in addition or whatever to this request. But I think is an ongoing thing that that might be a, an option for them. Maybe not from the town, I don't know, you know, future council, but seems like a good fundraising source that others are using.
Yeah, that is a similar, probably circumstance to what, when the chamber was started here, so, you know, almost 10 years ago now. The town was paying a large amount each year to the operations until they brought in their membership and then the town dialed back its support. So that's what you're describing is a pretty similar situation to eight, nine years ago with the chamber.
Councilor Egan?
I, I asked about the capital because it's coming from our capital budget. And I, I think we had a, a really good progress with how, how the group got Meeting House Arts up and finished. And I've been to several events there and it's fabulous. And it's dead smack in the middle of our downtown. You can't get a more centralized performing arts center than, than what we have there. And that's worth a lot. And so I'm, I'm a little bit torn because it, we're establishing a pattern of capital improvement money to go towards operating a nonprofit organization. But as Jake just pointed out, we already do that in a couple of different areas. And I'm, I'm hopeful and enthusiastic and I'm buying tickets to everything that I can possibly get to for ACAF to become self-sustaining with their grants and fundraising and ticket revenue to, to be stable. But it, it's apparently not there yet. And I've certainly heard that plenty from, from the director and from the board chair. So I'm, I'm in favor of, of supporting them. It's a, it's a bit of a challenge. You know, there's something inside of me that wants to ratchet it back a little bit, but in the larger scheme of 1.6 or 1.8 million dollars, I don't know if $10,000 difference on that budget is all that significant where it's an enormous difference to Meeting House Arts. So I would support it.
Councilor Bradley?
Yeah, I mean, it's no secret that I have been long involved in ACAF and big supporter of the development of Meeting House Arts and, and a recent significant contributor to their assets. So with all of that, I, you got to take me with a grain of salt, right? But first of all, this is from TIF and it's a downtown destination TIF, which specifically authorizes payments to activities like this without distinguishing between capital and operation. Secondly, though, remember that ACAF got caught in COVID. And they got caught also in a regulatory situation, which increased their capital costs for finishing Meeting House Arts. It's really hard to parse that apart. You know, even for people who are as close to it as I am, I can't tell you. But I can say that, that this is not, although it must look like, a continuing resolution to come after TIF funds. That's not the intent. The intent is, is part of downtown revisioning. As one of the principal projects that's already ongoing and I'm, I'm not only in planning, but actually in, in operation and doing things, not just to Chip's point in competition with some of the other venues, but for all of the public purposes for which the arts exist. This, this facility, whether it's visual arts or performing arts, is for the entire community without regard to whether it makes money. It's a public service. So I put all of that together and I just, you know, I appreciate John's support for this. And I hope others will support it as well. But this is a critical year. Reality is, the town has invested a lot in this and it's at risk because of the year. And if it's, if at the, at the next year, it's making the same payment, then I would be a lot more critical myself. Making the same request for support at that level. But I think Jake's comment about putting it, putting it in as one of the organizations that could appreciate and benefit from a smaller, but a continuous and predictable funding source, that's a great idea. But this year, I plead, just help them through this year. Help them through this next season when COVID seems to be backing off. I mean, I was at the Women of Harmony on Sunday, which is not a well-known group, but a spectacular group. The place was full. It was full. It was the first, as I'm sure, not sure I'm right about this, but almost the first non-COVID event. And the, the, the place was full. Everybody had a great time. And that's what this place will do for this town. And it brought people in here to this town who went on to have lunch and dinner and, you know, drinks and whatever else they did after, after that, because they didn't go home.
Interesting to see a bunch of full parking lots on Sun- Sunday afternoon behind ACAF. Not something you see all the time.
So I appreciate your listening to me. I, I am overwrought and over supportive, I'm sure. But this is a great project for the town. It's part of the revisioning and it needs help.
Councilor Pillsbury?
So can you clarify in the letter, it's, it's just basically asking for broad support or for capital improvements?
So the first paragraph recognizes the investment that town has made to the advanced arts and culture and the vitality of Freeport. Due to the town's designation, combined with ACAF's fundraising of more than 90,000 in private donations, enabled them to lease and renovate the main floor. In addition to giving the building a new lease on life, this, our, the partnership between the town and ACAF has given us Meeting House Arts, which is an ongoing activated commitment to the potential for arts and culture to benefit communities. And they're asking for our continued investment. And then it talks about it as an asset and what it's done in the first six months since opening. In its early years, ACAF started as a community calendar and network for local artists. In the past three years, they've secured a building, raised capital from pub- public and private sources, renovated a historic structure, built a state-of-the-art performance venue. And today they operate a vibrant and vital arts and cultural organization and they're just getting started. Pursuing our mission to increase access to the arts and curves, programming, building, maintenance and facility management costs, which require significant and sustained financial support from a variety of sources. They were overcome by challenges of COVID while building and they are looking to our, their first and closest partner, the town of Freeport, to help. So that's kind of how it's listed, sorry.
So thank you for doing that. I didn't mean to make you read the whole.
No, that's okay. I just, I felt it was important with the question to kind of give the, the layout of it.
I guess my point, so I agree with the points made. Absolutely think we should continue to support, especially to give them a footing to really thrive. But, you know, if I'm weighing a request for money, I would really like to see some detail to it and know exactly what it's going to be. Like, it's easy for us to set up here when Visit Freeport says, hey, we need X amount of money for the sparkle parade to do public safety. That's, it's just like, that's very clear. Requests like this, I think it brings speculation as, oh, what are they doing? Are they going to ever be self-sustaining? How, like, what's the long-term impact? I mean, it's just not very clear in my opinion. So I guess I just make a pitch that if there's more detail to be had, the better. I, I think that that's an easier way for me to evaluate these things.
Fair, fair point.
I guess my only concern is, and I do support ACAF, I have been a supporter. One of my groups is going to be using the thing. But we also have other venues in town that are commercial operations that also have gone through this whole operation and they're not getting any money from, and they're not getting any support from the town other than when they can sell tickets. So that's, that's my biggest concern. I know they don't do the same thing, but we've got to be careful about how we go about doing that.
So we've got a few options. We can, you know, somebody could ask for a vote tonight. We can challenge them to come back. We have one more opportunity before we approve this at the next meeting. Or we could just leave it as is, in which case it would not get added. So unless there's a motion or activity, it would not get added.
We'd, we'd have the ability to add it before we vote on the budget at the next meeting?
Potentially, because we don't approve it until next meeting, right? This is our public hearing tonight technically, and of course, it's an opportunity for us to discuss, but there's one more meeting before we approve the program.
This is a public hearing?
Yeah, it was.
Well, I guess I'd make a motion that we ask ACAF to bring a little bit more detail so that there can be greater comfort and broader support up here for adding that, so that we don't lose the opportunity to do so.
You're going to do that as a motion or just a?
I'm making that as a motion.
As a motion, okay.
I'll second that.
We've discussed it all, all in favor of making the request to ACAF for that?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed to that request? So I think that's all of us? Councilor Bradley, I assume, were you even on that?
I think it's a reasonable request.
Reasonable request, okay. So we've got six to zero with Council Fornier excused, of course. Okay.
At this point, I, just for clarification, is the expectation that you want the schedule updated to include that for your, or you want it left off and you'll, you'll physically add it in after reviewing the letter?
I think the consensus is to leave it off and then if they want to come back with more detail, they can, we can evaluate adding it in at the next meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Good. I've got a really brief one that I can just update. We don't need to have a lot of discussion about it. There was another item that was brought up for consideration from Council Fornier, which was dirt roads in town. There is an email printout in front of you between myself and Daryl that he asked to share with the council, just so you could take a look at it. And just a big picture, so our public works department did a cost analysis of that. We spend about $13,000 a year. That's including staff, sorry, I should say, this is Burnett Road, which is by far the longest dirt road that we maintain. We have others, but this is the most sizable one. We spend about $13,000 in material vehicles and staff time when we put hourly rates and do an analysis per year. The cost today to pave Burnett Road would be about $370,000. You know, give or take, whatever the asphalt market looks like, but that's, that's the current estimate. Good for budgeting if we wanted to. We would get about 15 years generally without any annual maintenance if we were to pave a road. So that would be a cost savings of about $195,000. The cost would be $370,000. There's obviously a gap there. It's $175,000. Over a 15-year period. After 15 years, we have to start doing maintenance to roads like crack ceiling. And then 20 to 25 years, we're usually repaving with at least a top coat again. So there's really no savings after 15 years. That's why I only did 15 years in the calculation. So it's a net of $175,000. Council Fornier thought that was worth talking about. Is that worth, you know, the, a lifetime of not having to drive down a dirt road? He mentioned several reasons why he thought that was important at the last meeting. So he's not here, but he might want to talk about it at the next meeting. But those are the numbers that you've got in the public can hear him to, so.
Any other discussion? Have a room? All right. So the next meeting, we're due to approve or adopt that with any last-minute changes that we might want to make. After that, we'll hear about the fiscal year operating and capital budgets, which we'll have basically all May to discuss. And that's due for a public hearing, in case anyone's interested. On June 7th, if we stick to our schedule for final adoption on June 21st, right?
Correct.
Cool. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work and putting this together and answering all of our questions. Okay. Our next public hearing of the evening is about our blasting ordinance. Do you want to present this before we open the public hearing, so they know what they're?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Just a very brief overview. This puts a blasting ordinance into place. What is a blasting ordinance? Well, Freeport does not have a blasting ordinance. We're not the only municipality in the area that doesn't, but we are definitely an outlier in not regulating blasting. And for those that don't know, blasting is typically using dynamite to remove rock from the ground. Usually it could be other things, but it's usually ledge, bedrock, boulders, things like that. What are some of the issues with that? Well, there's no notice. A lot of companies do provide notice on their own, but they're not required to by any rule that we have in place. So that leads to frequent surprise among people when, you know, a large charge of C4 goes off on the next property over. If you don't know what's happening, it If you don't know what's happening, it could scare you. There are legitimate concerns that, in addition to the just being scared and not knowing what it is and calling 911 and having our PD or fire department not know what it is and have to do a little bit of research if we haven't been contacted. There are also very legitimate medical concerns. We have people, animals and people that, either with medical conditions or, believe it or not, one of the biggest complaints we get, people with psychological conditions, aversions to loud noises, PTSD, things that this can be very damaging to their health. So we do get calls when blasting happens around town, and it actually has a serious adverse condition on people's health if they don't know what's there. If they know what's going to happen, they can either prepare themselves or go somewhere else when it's going to happen. They're not saying, don't blast, but they're just saying, let us know. The other thing that this ordinance does is it establishes like a pre-blast process for surveys, both of groundwater and groundwater sources and structure, basically foundations, but it's structures that are within a certain radius of the blasting area. That's important because foundation shift, cracks appear in buildings, pools, things like that. And groundwater can be negatively impacted by, if the ground moves from a blast. So you can get silt specifically in your drinking water or chemicals. All you have to do is look up fracking that's basically underground blasting, hydraulic fracking. Not the same forces, but it can create similar type of situations in the immediate area of a blast in the ground if it gets into the groundwater. So that's a really big overview, but this was developed with the ordinance committee input. Actually, we gut and made a few changes, I think, with industry input. And I don't think it was anything harmful, but just a few things that's like, hey, that's not going to work. We left out a few things that the industry people recommended because we felt they, it offers more protection to residents. So we didn't make all the changes that were suggested. This is not a heavy regulatory bill. We're not doing the analysis. It's just a notification and awareness and survey, I would say, ordinance. So it provides, I would say, the base level of notification and protection to property owners, but doesn't involve the town beyond that. There is the option. A lot of towns and cities do go a lot further with doing analysis and, you know, things like that. So there's that option. That's not what's being proposed here, but I think it's the minimum that we need to do.
Super. So we have a public hearing we could do first, and then we can bring it up in case you want to discuss it more. But Council Lawrence, would you want to mind opening the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? So anybody who's here to talk about our proposed blasting ordinance, now would be a good time to share thoughts on how we did and what we're doing. Sounds like generally a good idea. I'll take silence as a good. Any, just checking on Zoom, anybody? Any hands up on Zoom?
There are no hands up on Zoom. You have our town planners on Zoom. I know the planning department staff worked on it, but I, she doesn't need to chime in unless you've got specific questions. She can add some value to it.
Councilor Lawrence, you want to close?
Hey, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Daniele. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Any opposed? That's six to zero. Thank you. So Council Lawrence, one more time. You want to read the Be it ordained, please?
Be it ordained that the proposed ordinance, Chapter 63 blasting, be adopted.
Second. Sorry.
Any discussion? You guys want to dive into this? I think we did talk about it once at a previous meeting, so we're familiar with it. Dove into a handful of questions we had. Any other questions?
Recognize our resident ordinance writer experts out in the audience this evening for bringing this issue forward and helping us craft that. So thank you very much.
Yep. And thank you. Thank you for being patient, as it took a long time to get to area, but it looks like it's going to happen sort of quickly in the next few minutes. All right. So all in favor of our new blasting ordinance? And you opposed? Six to zero. We have a new blasting ordinance. Well done. Okay. Our next item is undoing an ordinance, proposing to repeal our victulars ordinance, which I think we've talked about a handful of times previously. So I don't know that we need a long introduction, but, you know, the proposal on the table is to not have a victulars.
Yeah.
Ordinance anymore because we felt like it was redundant with a lot of the things that the state already requires of people who sell food in Freeport.
It was redundant in several aspects and sketchy in one aspect, which is doing criminal background checks on people. Or I should say, good moral character. It wasn't even a criminal background check that would be legitimate. It was a, do you like this? It was a popularity contest. Which also has been.
Illegal.
Which has been problematic for reasons like racial profiling, discrimination, things like that in the past in other locations. So I'd love to get it out of there. Not like that's going on now in Freeport, but like it to be gone.
Just a hotbed of all that stuff.
Just opens up, just opens up to somebody. And by the way, our police chief said, I don't want to make that decision if someone's a good. Nate says, I'm not a judge of someone's good moral character. What the heck?
Are you just for questions, or do you have something you want to add?
The only thing that I'm going to add to this whole conversation is if, if you do decide to repeal the ordinance, how you choose the clerk's office to handle any return of funds for partial year for people that have just paid.
And the fee's $135?
It's $135 without liquor service and $150 with.
And we probably have some of both.
And yeah. So I just think we need to think about if you're going to prorate refunds or anything if you do repeal it.
Okay.
I think that's certainly a fair request for somebody that's gotten only a portion.
Yep.
I mean, they're not getting a benefit out of it anyways, but we've only gotten a portion of a theoretical benefit for the full amount that they've paid, so.
Let's open the public hearing, and then we'll have a chance to discuss. Council Daniele, would you?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Council Lawrence. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a public hearing. Thank you, Council Lawrence. Anybody want to talk about the victulars license and why you think we should or should not have it?
You can just say everything I've said before.
Right, right. Ditto. I think the winds are, you know.
Tyce Spandifer, owner of Athena's Cantina on Route 1. When we first brought this fourth of the victulars, when we were paying the double, you know, for our food truck and also our restaurant, I think this is a really good idea because, you know, we do have to go through inspection with the state, and then we have to go through inspection with the town initially we had, and it was just a lot of extra, extra. We did pay our $135 and $150 for both.
When was that?
That'd be nice to get that back, partially.
When did you make that payment?
We. Within the past four weeks, yeah. Yeah. So we didn't, we were due to open in March, but we had to get stuff ready, and then we had some plumbing issues today, so we didn't open. So we're, we, I did, I knew that the meeting tonight for the victulars and the, to get that removed. That's a really good idea, and I'm really happy that we brought it forth, and you guys are really considering that. And thank you so much for all your hard work on that part of it.
Thank you.
For you, go ahead.
I have to go home now with the baby, but thank you guys again.
Yeah, thank you.
We did put our, our, all of our stuff went in today, I guess, so I don't have to be here for that, right?
No, you're actually, your victulars licenses are on their table. They haven't actually been accepted because they were in the ones that we're not going to need if this goes away.
Okay.
So even if the check has been cashed, it should be returned because you haven't gotten the license.
Okay.
So don't worry about that, but I think we need to talk about everybody else that had been approved.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much, you guys.
It was one of five that we were holding. Domino's, Antonia's, Crepe and Carrick, and the two for Athena's.
In the last meeting, we chose not to accept them. Any other public comment? Anybody on Zoom or from the public?
Oh, there's people on Zoom.
Nobody, resident, okay.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Council Daniele, you want to read the Be it ordained, and we'll second that and get it up for discussion?
Be it ordained that Chapter 30 of Victulars ordinance be repealed in full.
Second.
Any discussion? We should probably discuss the fees. So there were five that we tabled from last time. We haven't cashed the check or will return those checks. The others, one, we were about a fourth of the way into the year. So one way to handle it is if anybody wants to come and ask for 75% of their fee back, I would concede supporting that.
You can do it by month.
They're actually rolling, right, Chris?
Yeah, they're, so.
So it's 12 months from the date that you send it in?
Chris doesn't have a microphone, so she's got to run down.
So we have victular licenses that come due every month. So we could very easily look and at what you've paid, how much you've got, divided by 12, figure out the proration. We could do that very easily.
So, yeah.
Second.
So if they come and ask, we'll prorate the return on a monthly basis?
Yeah, just go do it.
I feel like we should.
I almost make it effective March 1st.
Yeah. That's, well.
So.
Yeah, April 1st.
All right, April 1st. I just.
I get it.
Well, we've already, we've already, we're going to return all the ones from March anyways, so.
Oh, you are. Okay. So make it, yeah, make it March 1st.
Right.
So proactively return the money without the masking?
Yep.
That's what's on the table?
Yep. That is. Along with repealing this.
Along with repealing it. Any discussion on those? Well, we got two.
Strongly in favor of that.
All right. All right. So first, let's vote on the fee, returning the fees to everybody who's paid on a prorated basis. All in favor of that?
It is starting March 4, or ending March 1st.
April 1st.
I thought it was March, is it?
Well, it won't matter. There were none in March.
Yeah. Well, the ordinance wasn't in effect until April 5th, any, or whatever.
What's today?
April.
April 5th. So the first of the month would make sense because in theory, you're, if you paid in April 1st of last year, you've been covered by it all the way until now.
Yep.
So I would say.
Yeah, for ease, that's right. But if we're not going to, then they should actually pay for a month because, but I'm just trying to get it, make it fair, that's all. So March 1st, I would say March 1st because that's where we're stopping it.
We haven't, we haven't taken any applications after March 1st, which you've been holding on to the table.
So if we went back to March 1st, that would just.
The same effect, I think, either way. Yeah, yeah.
Well, it gives you, it's less a month.
Could we make it easier and just say, we'll refund half to anybody who's applied this year so far? Because everybody else, I mean, they were expecting this cost, you know, it was last year's cost. I'm just looking at, the point of this is to make it not logistically difficult.
Actually, some of that money is going to be in last fiscal year, and we can't refund it because.
So if we just said, look, if you did it within this calendar year, we'll give you half back. If you applied in December, you, you know, you were expecting it. It's already a long time ago.
Would have, if they applied in this calendar year, getting half back is a worse deal.
Yeah, then go do it by March.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's easier to do because then we only have to do some people.
We can, Chris, Chris has this, we have it on a spreadsheet. I would only ask that we do everything, can we prorate back starting in July instead of April? Because we would have had people who paid May of last year. They're already booked in the audit and accounted in last year's revenue.
Yeah. I think it has to be fiscal year.
Prorate, not, you know, nine.
Prorate anyone who's paid.
Exactly.
Starting July 1st, is that what you're saying?
Yep. Anybody who is.
We're talking about giving back $30, you know, and the price of doing all of this.
Hundred fifteen bucks a month, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't think that.
Yeah.
Is that necessary personally?
No, I'm just telling you the right way to account for it, but it's not going to kill us if we do it the other way. That's, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, but it is a big deal. You've closed your books, and we don't want to open them up.
We'll be refunding it out of this year's revenue.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's technically an issue, but it's, yes.
Yeah. I'd be comfortable letting staff figure out how to account and leave, leave the motion as is, which is to, to refund things on a prorated basis without having to ask.
Based on what the staff thinks is, or is legal and.
Well, eight, well, well, March, March 1st. So we'll go back and everybody that was, that paid April 1st of last year would be one month. Everyone that paid March 1st of last year that didn't get renewed. For example, the five that are on here aren't going to get refunded anything. Everybody in April will get refunded one twelfth. Everybody in May will get refunded two twelfths. Chris can do the calculation. It'll take just a minute. It's not as complicated as it sounds.
All in favor of that motion on refunding the fees? Any opposed? That's six to zero. And we have another motion on the floor, which is the repeal of the victular ordinance itself. So that's already been moved and seconded. All in favor of repealing the victular ordinance?
You're here.
Any opposed? That's six to zero. Thank you. We have one new ordinance, and we got rid of one ordinance.
Well, I want to say I've already got my sights on another target, which is the coin-operated amusement ordinance.
Maybe that will require less discussion.
Because video games, somebody who is looking to establish a video game arcade in town, who's a local business, has been repeatedly running up against us. You're telling me I have to pay you a tax if I open a video game arcade? And I'm saying, that seems pretty stupid, but it was a big deal in the 70s. So the town thought that they would make a ton of money from pinball and video games. And now it's actually standing in the way of business, and somebody's kind of hemming and hawing on whether to, to pull the trigger on starting an arcade for what, a couple thousand dollars of revenue that we've never had before? It seems foolish.
Put it on the agenda, Peter.
It's on the agenda.
In the moral turpitude of video games, you know, there, they were thought, pinball was going to destroy the youth. And apparently, you know, it has destroyed, it has destroyed a lot of us, you know, from, from the looks of it, so.
While we're on the topic of fees, collecting fees from people, we, now that we changed these ordinances, we have some fees to adjust, to remove and to add. We, we do. I was going to ask Council Bradley to read the Be it ordained for item number 66-22. Ordered.
Be it ordered.
Be it ordered, thank you.
Be it ordered that the fee schedule be adopted as amended to add a fee for a blasting permit and remove a victory license fee?
Second.
Second by Council Daniele. Thank you. So we're adding a $75 fee for a blasting permit, and we're getting rid of the $135, $150.
You were asking me if I had opened, if I had closed the public hearing while I was.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded.
Yep. Any discussion on the fees? Council Daniele?
What does this do to the, I should have asked earlier, but what does this do to the food truck fees that had to have a victulars license as part of that, right? So that just eliminates that section?
Eliminates that part of it. The food truck fee is still a separate fee. So we didn't change that. It's $50 up to three days or $200 if you wanted to get a fee for a food truck for the year. But now you don't have to do victulars in addition to that, which is what you used to have to do.
Can we make changes to that now or no?
Yes.
We, we did adjust those fees recently.
I know.
To bring them down substantially.
Yes, you can make, it's on the table. You can make any changes to the fee schedule you want in any way, shape or form. There's no notice requirements. It's just an order of the council. So you could actually do it on any Tuesday night you want to make the motion, but it's on the table now, so.
Right. It's on the table now, so I thought I would bring it up. I think that when we pass that, the intent from staff was to try to get people to stop coming in all the time for little things. So I think we should try to incentivize people to come once at the beginning of the year and just have that be the fee. So I don't know if, now that we've reduced the victulars part, do we want to reduce the year-long fee a little bit too? And just incentivize people to come and keep coming, as opposed to paying that $50 two or three times, so that way they come multiple times? We just say, listen, it's the same price if you come once or if you come four times?
Good, Mike. I mean.
I'm not going to make.
Down already.
I'm not going to make the motion unless people are interested in it. But what's the point of charging somebody who wants to come more often?
Well, they, they can come once, pay $200 and be done with it. That's on the table already. We, we already have that in place.
But I'm saying, why do we have a distinction? Are we trying to make more money off of the people who are committing to our town to be here all the time? Or should we just have it be one fee? You come in one time per year for $50 or $100, whatever it is, somewhere in there. I'm saying, get rid of the three-day thing and just tell people you come.
Yeah. I was looking at it the other way around. Looking at it like it's a $200 fee for a food truck, but if you're only here for a couple of days, we'll cut you a break and only charge you 50.
Which is fine if that's what the council wants, but I just think that if the point was to try to, because didn't we increase it from, you could do a three-day once to like six times or something?
Yeah, it was more complicated in the past.
It got weird.
I don't disagree with you, Jake, but I wonder if, we're not seeing or hearing about that this is a problem. So I'm wondering if.
We just started though.
I'm wondering if.
It's, it's better than it was, but I think the, I think the intent was to make it not cost prohibitive, but anything other than onesies and twosies, somebody who comes in to do a single event and isn't going to come back to Freeport. You know, like is traveling through or is like, you know, far across the state or in another state. To make it so they have an option, it's not $200 a year, but then pretty much to encourage everybody else not to have like a six or an eight or a nine time where they'd want to come in multiple times to do their licensing, but to have, I think the proposal was ones and twos and then yearly, the original proposal. But then that got amended to go up to a higher number, right?
That's what I remember, is I just remember that there was the up to part, and it got confusing. So if we're, I don't need to bring up old conversations, but.
Some voices from the restaurant community too, saying, hey, you know, it wouldn't be. Some voices from the restaurant community too, saying, hey, you know, it wouldn't be entirely fair to reduce the fees too much, because we've gotta pay our fees to be here, I was in the brick and mortar restaurant.
Okay.
Just.
I'll let it sit if there's no complaints.
What are the fees that they have to pay out of the vitular license that we just got rid of?
Uh, I'm, I'm remembering what they were bringing to the table, because these are kinda.
Overhead, it was mostly overhead.
Overhead, taxes, property taxes, things like that, food truck doesn't have property taxes.
Bricks and mortar, overhead.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Utilities, stuff like that, yeah, so.
I, can, can the audience ask a question on it?
Sure, sure.
Yeah?
Maybe you have to, yeah.
We'll get you a mic, hold on.
Amanda Kent, Freeport resident and business owner. One of my questions would be, um, and I don't know if it was ever addressed, but for a business that is locally here, if they have to double hit, so in other words, they're already paying, they're like Tais's business, Athena's Cantina, we'll use that as an example, she doesn't get any break for being a Freeport business, she's not coming in from outside. Does she get any special perk for that? Um, I know that there was some discussion about other Freeport business restaurants that were interested in maybe doing a food truck. If they were able to get a little perk, a little love from the town, then, you know, they may, they may do that, and that would serve some of the purposes of what this whole concept is.
I think that was the discussion about having a third rate for a restaurant in Freeport that had a food truck that was auxiliary to the restaurant, right?
Exactly.
But operated elsewhere in Freeport, right? Yeah, we did talk about that, but didn't do anything on it.
I don't think there's a fee.
And part of that was that the vitular's fee was, because part of the issue was, I have to pay vitular's fee for the restaurant, and I have to pay vitular's fee for the food trucks, and we did just deal with that.
Right, and so now, she just has to pay a food truck fee.
If she wants to have a food truck.
Which is fine, but it, I'm just wondering if you're already paying taxes and you're a brick and mortar business in Freeport, you know, shouldn't you get like a discounted food truck fee?
Not a bad argument.
If you're serving the, you're serving the people of Freeport. Just asking, okay.
Yeah.
You're already paying taxes, right? Even if it was just a resident that had a food truck.
That was the, that was the idea of the discussion, right, was that there are businesses that are still paying, they're paying all their operating costs for the restaurant, and they wanna do a food truck, is there a different rate schedule? I don't think we got far enough down that, because we got sidetracked on vitulars to discuss, to come to a conclusion, but I know that we didn't vote to do anything in that regard, so.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm kinda, go ahead.
You know, if you're, if you're a resident of Freeport, why do we, why do we have the fee? I mean, you still, you still have everything else, but you're paying, you're, the reason we have the fee for people out of town is because they don't have to pay a tax or something like that, right? And we wanna know who's here. I think if you're a Freeport resident, you could come in and just register your truck, and say, oh, you're a resident? You're paying taxes, you're part of the town?
We've got a hand, hand up on our staff and the audience.
The assumption would be that the food truck with a local restaurant would be using the same kitchen for whatever's produced out of the food truck, would come out of the brick and mortar restaurant?
Maybe, but maybe not.
Maybe you don't have to.
All the food trucks are licensed.
Different.
It could be, it could be prepped in the kitchen, but they can also prep solo in the food truck.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Caroline, we have our town planner, looking like she wants to add to the conversation.
Yeah, sorry, I was just gonna rewind to Jake's comment, um, just wanted to remind you, like, last year at this point, they would have had to pay a five hundred dollar food truck fee for the year, plus the vitulars, which is why we never had anyone do it. Tonight, if you repeal that vitular's fee for the year, they'd only pay two hundred dollars, and we've already had our first two trucks licensed for the year, um, they both pull year licenses. Uh, we did have some discussion previously about resident versus non-resident, um, you know, honestly, from a paperwork perspective, they are licensed separately from the restaurant, they're licensed as mobile food vendors. It is different, and regardless of where they live, you know, we do go through the same paperwork process. Um, so just, you know, some additional background there for you to consider.
Yeah, and, and I guess part of the fee is meant to recoup staff time and administrative. Yeah, I, I, I'm okay with, you know, since it's a very recent change, and there was a lot of discussion at the time, letting it sit for a year and seeing how it gets, you know, what the reaction is. Good. So the motion on the floor is to remove the vitular's license and add the seventy-five dollar blasting permit. Any other discussion? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero, we have new fees, thank you. Uh, next is item sixty-seven dash twenty-two about dog warrants. Uh, Chris, do you wanna give us a two-minute or less update on what we're sign, what we're approving, we're signing?
There you go.
Um, so, back in two thousand thirteen, your town clerk, we had repealed, the state repealed the dog warrant process. Um, the town clerk at that time felt it was important for the town to continue with the dog warrant process, so she brought it to the council, and the council adopted, um, this procedure that we have to go through every year. As of April first, we have to turn this list over to the animal control officer for collection. So, um, my office has spent an exorbitant amount of time trying to make this list a manageable list for our ACO. Um, it, this has involved multiple emails, um, postings on Facebook, on our electronic sign, announcements at council meetings, placed on the web, placed on Facebook, you know, it's, we've done everything that we can. And then, um, starting a week ago, we started calling four hundred dog owners to get that list down to what, um, we brought tonight, so. Um, that's where we're at. And then the animal control officer has until July first to try to get these people to come licensed without summons.
You're sort of hinting that there might be an alternative to doing it this way? What would that look like?
Yeah, there's an alternative, but it would, you, you can establish, the council can establish that, right, within.
I, I mean, it's just that we, without the warrant process, it doesn't go to the ACO. There's not that official warrant where the ACO is by statute, by local statute, required to track down the dog owners. Yes, Ed?
I'm thinking, you know, I, nobody tells me my license, car license is coming up, right?
Right.
And you're calling four hundred people, tell them they're dogs, not much.
I am.
So is there, couldn't we just say, here's to the ACO, here's the list, tell them they're in violation, and, and send them a bill? And then, without any more than that, why do we have to go through all of that you do? Which I, I think is great for the, because some of these dogs are dead, some of them are, you know, run away, some of them, and the owner doesn't care.
Some people have moved, so, yeah, yeah.
So you're, you're just telling them that they've not licensed a dog that they used to license, you're not telling them that they have to license this dog. You're just, you're just telling them that the dog they licensed last year is not licensed this year, and, and is, and there may be a whole bunch of reasons for that, so why not just?
Stop.
Stop.
Yeah.
Why do we, why do you, what makes you go through, other than you're a nice person, makes you go through all this?
To try to get people to license their dog, it's.
Well, but this, this is not our job.
Well, I think.
It's in statute, right, you have to do this.
I mean, yeah, it is state statute that you have to license your dog, I guess I'm, I guess I'm getting lost.
I license my car, but I, so I mean, why, is there something that makes us make this?
Yeah, there, there is, of not sending a list of eight hundred dog owners to get visited by the PD to have a ticket written to them, because people don't like that.
You don't do that until you find a dog without a license, just like they don't get me until they find me in my car without my license.
Yeah.
You don't go out and look for everybody who didn't license their car, you wait till the cop, the policeman finds him, and then he gets a, he gets a, a bill.
I know, we, we are required by state law, though, to.
Do what?
I mean, we get, we get your annually, we get your rabies vaccinations, we're required to track down and see if that dog is licensed, and then to send out notification, so.
If you don't know the dog is out there, I get, I don't think it's a big deal, except I think you're spending a lot of time.
I thought you said the state repealed that, and then the previous.
The warrant part, but not about vaccinations, no.
Can we just repeal our warrant part, not the other parts of that?
The council could repeal the warrant part, and then it wouldn't have to go to the ACO for collection, they would just kinda hang out there, and then if the dog was caught, say, and had to go to the pound, then they would get the summons for the unlicensed dog.
Are there, is the civil part, the fine levied regardless of the, so you're gonna have people with this, what is it? Is it a civil forfeiture, what's the?
The, the fine after February first is twenty-five dollars, added on to the license fee, that's non-negotiable.
It's mandatory under state law.
That's mandatory under state law.
So we're not gonna go out, collect it if we don't send the dog officer, or people are gonna have these fines levied against them legally by the town, and not maybe know it until they're called next year with, please renew your dog registration, is that the idea?
I guess the idea is to, basically is to start with a license fee. If people don't license during the normal time before February first, the state says, charge a twenty-five dollar late fee. And then, if, with the warrant process, what the ACO is required to do is if they, someone then doesn't license their dog, they get a, it's like a hundred dollar summons for unlicensed dog. So that six dollar license just went to a hundred and, you know, a hundred and thirty-one dollars.
So the, so the twenty-five, the six and the twenty-five would stay?
Non-negotiable, state statute.
Right, like that's levied against somebody, they might never come back into the town hall, but if they ever wanna register a dog, they have to do that. Or if they get caught with an under-registered dog, and they're told by the police department of the court to register their dog, they have to pay all those back fees, is that the idea?
I'm gonna tell you that municipalities don't talk to each other, though, in dog licensing, so there's, there's a disconnect.
Right, it's not like voter registration, where you come off the list, and one, and you automatically go on to the other.
Correct.
There's a, there's not a CDR, Central Dog Registry, right?
Correct, because the state couldn't fund it, but that's okay.
So, just as an improvement next year, can we ask for email addresses when we get dog licenses?
Um, we already do, and we already do the emails.
So you don't have to call each of the eight hundred people?
No, they email like four times before they call.
We, we've done the email twice before we start calling.
Not four, sorry.
So warrant is meant to help people?
The warrant is just that legal piece that the ACO needs in order to go to your door and knock and say, you know.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
It's a less severe version of a warrant, warrant.
Correct.
So Bradley?
It's a knock.
I'm trying to get my mind, I'm trying to get my mind around the idea that we go out looking for dead and lost dogs to see if they're licensed.
Most of them aren't dead or lost, most of them are.
Most of them are not, right, yeah.
But is there, is there some damage to the, to the society that we live in if there is a dog out there unlicensed, other than we haven't gotten the fee?
Yes, they, they're not vaccination verified. So that's been, that was a priority that the state law was put in place, to make sure that it's mandatory to rabies vac your dog, if you own a dog in the state.
So what we're really doing is going out and making sure everybody's got a vaccinated dog.
That's the primary, beside keeping track of them, so when you have dogs at large, you have a registration.
And we can return dogs to their owners, or.
So the tag number.
All this money that we're spending on you and all the people who do it to figure that out, rather than wait for a dog to show up without a license, and then nail them with all these fees.
In theory, or, but in theory, you are, if you're lessening compliance, you are lessening the rate of vaccination, the, the motivation to vaccinate, you're guilty as charged, my dog came up, and my vacs, my rabies vaccination had to get renewed, so I had to take him down to get jabbed in November or something to get the, to get the registration. I wouldn't have checked that, the vet would have the next year when I went in, but it, you know, it, three or four month period that, in theory, would have been out of compliance.
But you still wouldn't have gotten this warrant, because you were licensed already.
No, no, right, but if I hadn't come in and done the license, six, eight months later, I would have gotten a knock from the dog, from the ACO, and they would have said, where's your dog? Oh, he's right there, he's barking at you, go and register, I'd come down, and they'd say, oh, you don't have a rabies vax, they'd check with the vet, and it would have gone on twelve months instead of six months, for example.
Chris, we can't just send the warrant, you know, two letters, come, come register your dog, come register your dog, still silence, and then we just send the warrant with a fee and a invoice?
In years past, the ACO has done a, we've done a summons type letter from the animal control before they started going door-to-door, I'm more than happy to assist her with that if she wants to do that. I mean, it's just however the ACO wants to handle her part of the process now.
That would change what we're doing tonight, though, right?
Right, too, if they wanna do it that way, so.
Okay.
I think we could vote on it tonight to move this forward, but if you wanna make changes, I would suggest proposing those, and we can make changes for next year, or whatever.
Thank you, Counselor Daniele.
Yeah, Counselor Daniele? Any other discussion before we vote on approving, uh, no, actually, we gotta get this read in.
Chris, Chris, can, can I just ask one question, just, are we, are, can you put a number on, just rough estimate on dead, or moved away, or runaway dogs versus when they go out and they find that the dog is all well and just not registered? Is it the majority of them, because we just had that exchange?
I don't care about that, I was trying to make a point.
Okay.
I'll change it in the future.
Never, never mind, uh, the.
It's for me.
Question withdrawn.
Request pointless, go ahead.
Um, Counselor Egan, would you mind reading the Be it Ordered for item sixty-seven dash twenty-two?
Be it ordered that the twenty-twenty-two dog warrant be signed, second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence, any further discussion about having Pooh Bear and Maggie Mae, Stark, Bodie get their owners to get them licensed? Tony's on the list, Mars needs a license, let's go, Mars. Uh, all in favor of the dog, signing the dog warrant?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero, I will sign the dog warrant, pass it down. Uh, item number sixty-eight dash twenty-two, uh, about having a food truck on town property, because we love talking about food trucks. Our open house is Saturday, uh, it's eleven to two, it's during the middle of the day, we have lunch. Uh, we thought, since we're so bullish on trying to get food trucks, uh, we would offer a spot for a food truck to come to town. Uh, so we have a tentative agreement for Tais to bring her food truck to town to support our open house, but it's on town property, so we just need to say that it's okay to use town property for a food truck. That's what this item is about.
When we've been presented with the April ninth date by principal and others, uh, it's always common, as I've heard it and remembered, that it was coming with lunch, I heard it said that we were gonna provide refreshments.
They were gonna provide the ability to buy lunch, we were careful about it, because there's a lot of debate about, do we buy lunch, do we offer people to buy lunch, and what are the options?
Give them a chance to buy lunch.
Give them a chance to buy lunch, um, or they can always bring lunch, or stop by here and then have lunch somewhere else.
Do we have one truck, five trucks?
Only, uh, only because of the numbers, we, I'd love to have a dozen trucks, but I think we had seventy-five people registered. There's a chance it may rain Saturday, and we've talked to Tais about that, and she knows it, um, so, you know.
So, are we paying the truck a fee to be here?
Nope.
Okay, so why not have more than one truck?
We certainly extend the invitation, um, but, yeah, I, I would worry that the numbers might not support having two more trucks.
That's right, but, so this isn't to say we're offering to one truck, this is just say we're offering to whoever wants, sort of whoever wants to come down?
I'd be okay with that, saying, slightly mandating that food trucks be allowed on town property for the April nineteenth. Yep.
Because you may not feel like a taco on Saturday, you know?
Yeah.
It may feel like spaghetti and meatballs.
Oh, there you go, yeah. That's a fine suggestion.
I'm not even coming on Saturday, I might come for a keto, don't I?
Um, so, I, I'd be happy to take the privilege of reading, um, that be it ordered that food trucks be allowed on town property for the April ninth, two thousand twenty-two downtown revisioning open house.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Egan, any other discussion? All in favor of allowing food trucks on Saturday? Thank you, any opposed? Okay, thank you for that, we are on to.
Item, tabled item number sixty-one twenty-two is the vitular's licenses, so that's a moot, you might wanna vote to dispense of it, or deny.
Scratch it.
Uh, it's tabled, so we need to take some action.
Just vote it down, you don't need to renew them, it's a moot point now, so.
Do we need to read the Be it Ordered, and then just do not, you know, vote to, to say nay?
Yep, I would say that.
Or do we say it's been overtaken by events?
Or do we do, or is it not, do we just not take it up on the agenda?
Doesn't really matter, because there's nothing that's gonna come out of it anyways, whichever way you wanna dispose it.
Let it die on its own.
Yeah, we, we don't need to vote on it, right?
But I think if you, procedurally, Chris is jumping up over there, it would stay on the agenda if you don't vote it down.
We're making up laws, we go, that's right.
It would stay tabled if we don't take action on it?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's take action on it.
We'll untable it and then let it go.
So, so we'll read it, we'll, we'll vote on it, uh, and we'll vote to deny the licenses, I assume. So Counselor Pillsbury, would you read the Be it Ordered?
Couldn't we vote to approve it, and then we'll give it to them, and then they don't have to pay?
There's, there's no vitular's license for them to get?[1763.06]
Yeah, but what you're saying is, is that we wouldn't want to give them a vicueller's license, as opposed to me, I'm saying, yeah, I would definitely give them one if I could.
Right.
Right, it's a positive spin.
So you no longer have an ordinance, you voted to do something that doesn't exist under the ordinances anymore. Go ahead, whatever you do right now, other than not do anything, as long as you do-
Make a motion to dismiss the item. How about that?
If you do something, whatever you do, it's going to take care of the problem.
All right, Councilor Pillsbury, you want to take a stab at it?
I'd make a motion that we dismiss the tabled item number sixty-one dash twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is fifty-nine dash twenty-two, which is an annual report for an affordable housing TIF that we saw last time, that we had some open questions about, that town manager has some answers for.
I do, I have a verbal confirmation and a procedural update from Matt Peters, who's the executive director, I believe, for Freeport Housing Trust. He informed me, yes, they meet the criteria, he's going to put that in writing, haven't received it yet. He said they have to report independently to the state as well. So they already certify this to the state, because it's reimbursed, it's certified through DCD, no, DHS, so. So, if you vote to approve this, when I receive the written confirmation from him, or the copy of what he provides to the state, I'll send the notice on. I won't do that until then, but the concerns have been addressed.
Any other questions?
I mean, we're just approving the, that, this, we're just saying, this is what they are.
Councilor Lawrence, would you read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the annual report for affordable housing TIF districts for Oakleaf Two and Quarry Ridge be approved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of her ring report?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilor Bradley, were you an aye on that? I didn't see any, thank you. Six to zero, thank you. Okay, item number one ninety-four dash twenty-one is an item that has been previously tabled regarding shoreland zoning, I believe, along with item one ninety-five dash twenty-one. Oh, these are all tabled items, I see. So these two items have been tabled in the past. I'm going to recommend tabling them again. And the reason is, the, initially, these were brought to us as a large zoning ordinance that we were revising the shoreland zoning components of. We decided we would like to have the shoreland zoning pieces taken out and brought into a separate ordinance. So rather than vote on the changes that were proposed by these tabled items, we have a new proposed document, which is actually two different documents. We can't vote on that document yet, because the planning board is taking that up at their meeting tomorrow night. Since we don't know if they're going to approve it as is or not, we can't vote on anything yet. So, rather than get rid of these, we can table them one more time to have as a backup in case the new option doesn't fly for any reason tomorrow night. So my suggestion is we table these for one more meeting. At the next meeting, these will probably be dismissed, and a new shoreland zoning will be before us as two separate documents.
I make a motion that we table one ninety-four dash twenty-one and one ninety-four, one ninety-five dash twenty-one until next meeting.
Second.
Any questions? Yes?
Aren't they already tabled? So if we did nothing, they would stay, is what Chris just told us?
I think they would, but they might have been tabled to a definitive date, they would table it to tonight, if I remember right? So now we're just tabling to another night.
That would have an effect on whether they need to be noticed for a public hearing, so. That's the only reason you'd want to table them.
Good question. Keep us on our toes. Any other discussion questions? All in favor of tabling these to the next meeting?
Aye.
And you oppose, that's six to zero, thank you. But I've given ton of input on these items. Okay, that concludes our action item, action part of our agenda. So we are now on to other business. The first item of other business, we took out of order during the information exchange, so we're down to one item of other business. Thank you so much for being patient and sticking with us. I'm glad we started a half hour early tonight. This is a discussion regarding some properties on Dixon Road and a potential consent agreement. Can I?
I would love to maybe save everybody a lot of time by summarizing, and we have the property owners here, so they can feel free to speak if I leave anything out, but I'll try to summarize this to the, to the best of my ability, and there's a lot more that goes into this, but I don't know if it's all relevant at the current moment. The property in question is owned by the Lynx, and it's zooming in here as we speak. This is the Harasekot Yacht Club in the harbor, and this is their property here. There are three structures and a chunk of land, upland land, not much of it. How about there's upland land? So there are two cottages that look like kind of one unit over here on the right, and there is one house, that's their primary residence. The history of the property includes this house here. So this is two Dixon, and these are four, six, and eight Dixon down below.
Is it possible to go stand at the screen? I'm having a hard time following your cursor, because it's all the way.
Yeah, um, yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll stop and I'll, I'll actually just point, I'll stop moving the cursor. So, the house up on Harasekot, I'm not even touching it right now, it's, I don't know what it's doing, it's doing something on its own. The house up on Harasekot, directly underneath where it says groceries and restaurants, is two Dixon. It used to be a part, so there were, all four of these houses were on the same lot. There was at one point another structure down closer to the water that was removed. The timeframe, we're talking in the eighties, the timeframe to rebuild that structure had passed. Shoreland zoning at the time would not allow another structure to be created. The previous owner sought permission, when this was all, all one parcel, to build up on Harasekot Road, which is technically two Dixon. House is now owned by the Winters, or by Mark Winter and, and family. The town granted permission for that house to be built upland in exchange for an affidavit from the previous property owner that owned the entire lot, that one of the two cottage units would be removed as a separate unit. The building was allowed to stay, the dwelling unit had to go away. That was in nineteen eighty-five. To the best of the towns, or everything that we have, it may have been removed for a short period of time. Most of what the town has for records show that it was in place from eighty-nine onward. And I should say, the Lynx have owned the property for a little over ten years, so they are two or three successors in title beyond when this was all created. So, completely not the people who caused the issue here, but they are left holding the property. So that's why they're here in front of us. The, the previous two predecessors in title had to remove that unit. The predecessors in title, at least to the Lynx, we know, bought and operated it as two rental cottages for many years, and was sold to the Lynx. It's two rental cottages in one primary structure. Not supposed to be, but still passed on that way. There were several proceedings, there were building permits issued on the property, some permit work done on the property. There was a proceeding at the zoning board where the property was allowed to be functionally divided, which separated the uphill winter parcel from the, what is now owned by the Lynx on the waterfront. So, four, six, and eight Dixon now belong on one parcel. At that zoning board proceeding, it was repeatedly stated that they were three units, they were operated as two rental cottages and a house. None of this gives any legal right for that unit to be there, but it was repeatedly stated to the town time and time again. Everyone in the neighborhood agreed to it, that it should stay as it is, that the property should be allowed to be divided. Town never raised any issues with the previous owner at that time, or any-
When you say everyone agreed, you mean the planning board at that time?
Zoning board.
Zoning board.
Yep. So, the zoning board agreed to the, the proposal, and there was no opposition from anybody that was raised to the configuration of the properties, being two cottages and a, a house. The, or, I should say boathouse. The boathouse was later renovated by the predecessor, the previous owner, to be a residence, which, in the current state that it's in now, I want to say about two thousand five, two thousand six, was when the work was done.
That's the larger, the two buil-
Yeah, that's-
The three buildings on the left?
That's the left building, and that's their primary residence right now, the Lynx, right here. So, at the time, in two thousand five, the impervious area was also expanded. So asphalt pavement, about half of what's there with that white pickup truck as shown, was gravel before, and the rest of it was grass. It was expanded, and the patio in between all three of them, which is on a stone pier that was built out into the Harasekot River. So the, the area in between those three structures is a stone pier with pavers on top, and the three structures are on wood piers. So those are all suspended over the water. So there's the finger of land that comes between them, essentially, from a, you know, scientific standpoint, that's land, and then the upland where it's paved. That was, I'll say, turned impervious from vegetated, it was de-vegetated, I guess is the technical term from DEP's perspective, around two thousand five. So the two thousand three aerial photos show gravel and grass, and then the two thousand six, the five and the six, show it being constructed. During that time period, the town also inspected the work that was going on, on the boat yard, or, on the boathouse turning into the residence. It was, we've done some extra research since we last talked with you, that showed that the inspection, the CO inspection and inspections by the town happened when that work was not quite completed, but the aerial photos show that it was paved, and they were building the patio.
So we signed off on a permit that included the extra paving?
Well, we certainly signed off on the construction of a garage that opens onto the asphalt that, in theory, isn't supposed, well, I shouldn't say in theory, it's not supposed to be there by law. The asphalt, which I don't, I don't think anybody disagrees with, but the fact is, it is there.
Yeah.
The garage doors were allowed to point into it by the town.
The town permit on it.
And also a door opening onto the patio in between the two buildings was allowed to be constructed by the town. So, this, all of these circumstances, staff thinks, and we've consulted with the attorney, none of this, we would, the town would argue, the Lynx probably have a very different perspective, but none of it legally blesses any of the violations that we think exist on the property. So the number of units and the impervious surface. However, we also don't think it's ripe for enforcement action. None of the staff feels it's appropriate to enforce, and it's certainly not their fault. So, we believe it's justified to consider a consent agreement. The town's not going to be bound to it until we see the final terms, but we'd like, they're here to request, and staff would like permission to go forward and work on a consent agreement with them, to bring it back to you. Specifically, the item of concern is the unit number, the impervious is probably justifiable, and we can probably work on something there. The specific item of concern is the unit numbers, because obviously, they thought they bought a three-bedroom, a, a house with two rentable cottages. Your short-term rental ordinance made us review the file, which we found that there's only one rentable cottage there. So much, that's how this all came to their surprise last year. And I think they're obviously very concerned, being told by the town that there are only, there's only one unit there that can be rented separately.
As a short-term rental.
As a short-term rental, so they want to correct that.
What file is that, that's giving you that information?
The affidavit, the nineteen eighty-five affidavit that was-
Oh, nineteen eighty-five.
That was signed by the property owner, saying one of those cottages, not the structure, but it would not be operated as a separate unit.
Okay.
So-
So we had-
So, I guess-
violations that went completely uncalled, unnoticed, un-
I think that's fair. Yep. Again, we could, we could go-
A massively important short-term rental registration uncovers this.
We could, we could go to court over this violation, and maybe if we argued it on the merits, we would be successful, and maybe the Lynx would be successful, but that seems like an awful lot of stupid effort to burn over something that has existed for forty years, thirty to forty years. So, so, put it mildly, three years after I was born, something happened that I'm now dealing with. Yes, so, that's why they're here. And I, I've left out a lot of the details, I know, but is that, does that accurately sum up how you feel that?
I think that's the broad, broad color crime version.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot more detail that goes in there about permits are issued and things like that, but-
But that's all the past.
I don't, and I don't think that the town is arguing, we started out as being like, eh, there might be an issue here, but as we got more into it, especially in the past week, as we've looked through the, the inspection files and the permitting files and the aerial photos, it was there. The town should have said something, in my opinion. It doesn't mean that we couldn't say something now, it's very important to note, we could technically raise the issue and probably win, but I don't feel like that's really appropriate from an enforcement perspective on a forty-year-old, thirty-year-old case at this point.
Just for process, why, why don't we discuss first, and then if we have questions, if you don't mind stepping up to the podium, so Chris doesn't have to babysit with a microphone? And then if you want to speak, you can, but let us discuss and see where things are going, and maybe save some time.
No, 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 no.
No, it's a very public process, so I want you to stay here, please. Councilor Egan, I think, had a-
Well, I had a question, which I'll reserve for a little bit later, but, yeah, I mean, I think the, the pattern clear is here, and I'm usually the one that's, you know, not that in favor of consent decree agreements, but this is a clear case where that is obviously the solution, because the, the current owners had no part of all of these violations that has happened decades ago. My, my question, now that you've stepped up, Mr. Link, is, did you secure title insurance when you purchased the property?
We did, and the title insurance calls for the property meets and bounds and all the dwelling units on the property. So, you know, and additionally, before we bought the property, because I told my wife, the last piece of property I'm going to buy is where all the buildings are on pilings over water. And I, here we are. I, I, I did speak with, with the code enforcement officer at the time, because this was such an unusual piece of property and so forth, and, and he, I, I asked him specifically, are there any encumbrances or violations or things that I need to be aware of before I purchase this property? And he indicated that he was involved in watching all the redevelopment of the property. It's a historic property, the house dates back to eighteen thirteen, thereabouts, it was part of a working wharf. And he said that he was involved with the, the person that, that did it and saw all of the process, and he was unaware of any, any concern that I should be aware of. So we did proceed with the purchase. In speaking, the, we, we bought it from the estate of the woman that did the work. In speaking with her son, he, you know, of course, sides with mom, and said that she didn't do anything that wasn't above board and wasn't approved.
Sure. Okay, so I, I was just curious, that title insurance wouldn't have asked a question about what's allowed-
Well, interestingly, this affidavit that we're talking about was never filed with the, the registry of deeds.
Yeah, that's why it didn't come up.
That's why it didn't come up, and it actually appeared in our neighbor's file, so that's how it did.
It was on the two Dixon file, which used to be the same, this all used to be part of two Dixon Road, so it was on the nineteen eighty-five, two Dixon Road file. It wasn't, it wasn't duplicated and put in the four, six, eight file. It had been separated off by the prior owner. So the prior owner may have found this in the chain of title, if they looked in the file. But certainly-
That wasn't thrown out, because it's a separate property.
So there may have been some, there may have been some fault in doing the due diligence there. Very little of that, I think, is, is the Lynx problem here. I don't think, I probably wouldn't have looked at the predecessor file either. Maybe a title, John's question is good, the title insurance company should have chased it back up the chain of division and looked at all the mother parcel files. It wasn't raised, we have no-
How much money you pay them for them to do a review?
There's, there's no, there's no accusation here that the Lynx had anything to do with that or had this information. So, again, that doesn't cure the violation.
The division of the property occurred in oh-six, it was April sixth, oh-six, and that's when the, the zoning board granted the creation of a single conforming lot and a single non-conforming lot, with the condition of approval that no further division of the property be, be recorded.
And at that meeting, repeatedly discussed the three units that would be, including And at that meeting, repeatedly discussed the three units that would be, including the two rental cottages, that would be left on the downslope property with the file in front of them, that theoretically had the affidavit from nineteen eighty-five in it, including the code officer and the chairman looking at the file, et cetera, et cetera. So again, that doesn't cure the violation. It doesn't make it not a violation, but at the same time, that certainly makes me not want to pursue enforcement action. And furthermore, the consent, we think, is appropriate because it would clean up the chain of title moving forward
Yeah.
for the successors in the property, of which, of which they have concerns for-
Like we didn't look at this, we didn't look at this, we didn't, let's end that.
So, so there are a few things, we haven't talked about them with, but one of them would be that for the impervious, it appears that the state would consider a, would require an N R P A individual permit, which they've done for other work on the property. So that would be something that we would look for, but then if that was approved by the state, which they said it would, we could consent to the shoreland zoning violation, which would be the impervious cover. If they could permit the work within seventy-five feet through the state, which preliminary indication is that the state would consider an individual permit.
So would we wait for that to happen and then execute?
It could be done simultaneously, just with the assumption, yeah, it would be a condition. So obviously, a legal document would have to be drafted. We don't think it's appropriate for fines. We'd probably look for just costs from our attorney to work on the document and make that part of the agreement with the Lynx. I don't think fines and fees are, are part of this because there's no punitive action sought. So that, these are just kind of like the really hot button issues that would come up two months from now when we get this thing in front of you for approval. I'm hoping that would be agreeable if we're not doing that to the-
I'm foregoing forward with what you've got there.
Councilor Daniele, do you have something to say?
My only question was, and I assume it doesn't relate, but does the speaker's bill help this situation at all with accessory dwellings and?
I remember he specifically calls out shoreland zoning, right, and says that anything in shoreland zoning has to comply with shoreland zoning.
There is like problems. First of all, the lot couldn't be divided further by that zoning board ruling. If it had to go through, it would have to go through subdivision because there's three units on it now, so there's a whole bunch of layers. Even if it could happen, this would never- This would never comply with shorelands the way it is now, and it could be never made to comply with shoreland zoning the way it is now, so. It, it can't be added to. The impervious cover can't be added to. It can be probably rearranged if it was wanted, but it can't be increased, I don't think, on the property. The, the total lot coverage under today's standards and the impervious cover under today's standards would be violations that couldn't be enlarged, so.
So I don't think we're looking-
One of the impervious coverages is this area here, which is stone pavers on a stone pier. So I, 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 I think that that, we could take up the pavers, we'd have stones underneath them. No, that's, that's the point.
It's not, it, I think it's fair to say, this isn't endangering the Heresike River in any way that it had, it wasn't endangered fifty years ago when it was a working commercial pier. There may have been a time, there, there was a time period in between where it may have grown up, and it may have been vegetated cover that-
Better, yeah.
Diesel being dumped on the side.
So, so again, this isn't the big, I don't think this is the big-
It's on sewer and everything else?
It's on sewer, yep. And we went-
It's, it's on town sewer.
And we did, as a precot, one of the things that we asked them to do is let us look at the inside of the units to make sure, to corroborate. And everything that Greg had told us is accurate, that it doesn't look like there had been work done by, one, one thing, water heater, that, that Greg's going to pull a permit for. But there was no work to do any of the inside that was done prior to two, past two thousand and one.
And the cottages are seasonal. They're not year-round.
They're seasonal, and they're staying seasonal because they're winterized at freezing time. So the drains are actually, as was pointed out to us and observed, the drains and the plumbing is underneath between the water and the floor of the cottage, the pier, so.
I don't think we're looking for a vote or an action, just a sort of consensus that if they go off and spend the money on drafting a consent agreement, we would be favorable to it when they come back so they don't waste their money. So do we have that consensus?
I agree with that.
Yeah, it looks like we do. So is there anything else you want to add, or do you have what you came for, for tonight?
I'm, I'm happy with proceeding with the consent agreement. We'll obviously review it, but the, the spirit of what we're trying to do, and we've been very amicable in working with the town, is, is, is one of cooperation in any way we can. So we appreciate your consideration.
Which I have to say, I do appreciate, and Manager's filling me in, and we had a chance to meet, and, and, you know, it could have taken a different turn and been a lot more contentious, and a lot more lawyers would have gotten a lot more money out of it. So I appreciate your willingness and cooperation to date, and hopefully that'll continue.
Certainly think once the, oh my god, what's going on here, surprise wore off, they've been fantastic to work with. I would have probably reacted a lot worse if it had been, if I had found this situation out, so thank you, Greg. I really appreciate it.
Well, for my property taxes to go to pay my legal bills and your legal bills is kind of defeating the purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for your patience tonight. Okay. Our only remaining item for tonight is an executive session regarding a real estate matter, which I think will be, I shouldn't say how long I think it'll take, but it's listed for ten minutes. So I think I should mention that this is relative to an executive session pursuant to one M R S A section four oh five six C pertaining to a real estate matter.
Executive session.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Lawrence.
Roll call vote.
A roll call vote. Thank you. Councilor Pillsbury?
Aye.
Councilor Lawrence?
Aye.
Councilor Daniele?
Yes.
Councilor Bradley?
Yes.
Councilor Egan?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So we're now in the executive session.